Good evening.
Eileen, good evening.
The only two that I know that are not going to be here are Sujatha and Craig. I don't know if you've heard from anyone.
I heard the same, but that's all I know of. Yeah. Thanks.
And are we going to do the application first?
Well, we'll admit you will go in the order of the agenda.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, thanks. Nylee and I do see Susan Crawford. I didn't know if you just caught.
Yeah. Just waiting on. Guest on.
That's right. Great, and I have 7:30, so I'm gonna go ahead and read us in.
Okay, I'll keep looking out for, I think the only one I'm reading on is Gaston.
Okay, great. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, at 7:30 PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video means. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Are we doing roll call before we administer oaths or oaths before roll call?
We should do, I guess, the oath for Corey and Shree first.
Great, so, Council, I turn to you.
Thank you. We'll start with Srini Vijay. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Srini Vijay.
I, Srini Vijay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, partially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of Class Four Planning Board Member.
All the duties of the Class Four Planning Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you.
You can put your hand out. Do you have, Eileen, does Srini have the oath himself there?
Yeah, so I did send it to Srini and to Corey, so that they could sign it and forward it back to them.
Okay, Srini, if you can sign that, if you've already signed it, can you re-sign it in my presence? Because I have to so by that.
I haven't signed it as yet.
Do you need to print it out?
Yeah, so I'll just do it.
Why do you do that? And I'll move on to.
Got one in your package.
No, I think Srini's has put it in my package.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Okay, Corey.
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand? And repeat after me, I, Corey Biller.
I, Corey Biller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of office of Class Four Alternate Number One.
All the duties of the office of Class Four Alternate Number One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Is Corey signing it in your presence?
Yeah, you can sign that, that's fine. Okay, thank you very much. You can, you can email that back, scan and email it back to Eileen and she'll get it to me. Or you can email it to me directly, whatever you want to do, whatever's easier. And Srini, when you get your oath printed out, just let me know. I don't want to forget by the end of the meeting.
Sure, Eileen, if you can just email it to me, I'll do it right now.
I don't have, I'm not, I'm not at work.
Okay.
I can't. Did you get Corey's by chance, or did Corey get?
No.
No, I got it. You want to, if you want to send me your email, I could always scan it from here and send it to you if you want.
I can send, I, I can send, Eileen sent me a black, a blank version. So I can forward that to you, Srini.
Yep.
While we're doing the minutes that I don't really want to bother.
Super, I'll just do it right now as soon as it is.
Okay, I'll get it over to you.
Great, thank you. With that, almost out of the way, appreciated. Welcome to your new positions to our member and alternate. Now we can take roll call, Eileen.
Diane Eggwell. Guest on Halpert.
Here.
Srini Vijay.
Here.
Deborah Neves. We should do, I guess, the oath for Corey and she first.
Great, so Counsel, I turn to you.
Thank you. We'll start with Srini Vijay. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Srini Vijay.
I, Srini Vijay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, partially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of Class 4 Planning Board Member.
All the duties of the Class 4 Planning Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me, God.
To help me, God.
Thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you.
You can put your hand out. Do you have, Eileen, did Srini have the oath himself there?
Yeah, so I did send it to Srini and to Corey, done if they could sign it and forward it back to them.
Okay, Srini, if you can sign that, if you've already signed it, can you re-sign it in my presence? Because I have to so by that.
I, I, I haven't signed it as yet.
Do you need to print it out?
Yeah, so I'll just do it.
Why don't you do that and I'll move on to.
Got one in your package.
No, I think Srini's just put it in my package.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Okay, Corey.
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand? And repeat after me, I, Corey Biller.
I, Corey Biller.
Do solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of office of Class 4 Alternate Number 1.
All the duties of the office of Class 4 Alternate Number 1.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me, God.
To help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Corey signing it in your presence?
Yeah, you can sign that, that's fine. Okay, thank you very much. You can, you can email that back, scan and email it back to Eileen and she'll get it to me. Or you can email it to me directly, whatever you want to do, whatever's easier. And Srini, when you get your oath printed out, just let me know. I don't want to forget by the end of the meeting.
Sure, Eileen, if you can just email it to me, I'll do it right now.
I don't have, I'm not, I'm not at work.
Okay.
I can't. Should have been one. Did you get Corey's by chance or did Corey get two?
No.
I got, I got you. If you want, if you want to send me your email, I could always scan it from here and send it to you if you want.
I can send, I, I, I can send, Eileen sent me a black, a blank version. So I can forward that to you, Srini.
Yep.
While we're doing the minutes that I don't really want to follow.
Super, I'll just do it right now as soon as it is.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it over to you.
Great, thank you. With that, almost out of the way, appreciated. Welcome to your new positions to our member and alternate. Now we can take roll call, Eileen.
Diane Eggwell.
Here.
Gaston Halpert.
Here.
Srini Vijay.
Here.
Deborah Nevis.
Here.
Maggie Miggins.
Here.
Corey Biller.
Here.
Allison Canfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel Baer.
Here.
Chair Beth Zoll.
Here. Okay, we'll begin the meeting tonight reviewing approval of minutes because we did have a number of meetings canceled. It's a it's a large number. Corey, we'll assume you will abstain from voting on all of these as you were not on the board at the time, and I will ask you to just open up and review. If you need to abstain, as we go through each one, feel free to mention if you were not in attendance at that meeting and you can abstain. Let's begin with the minutes of June 1, 2022. Does anybody have comments or corrections? Okay, hearing none. Does anybody move to, I will move to approve the minutes of June 1? Any second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Gaston. All in favor of approving the minutes?
I.
I.
All hands raised. Any opposed? Okay, and absentees will be abstained. Moving on to the meeting minutes of June 15, 2022. Any comments or corrections to the June 15 minutes? Okay, seeing none, I move to approve the minutes of June 15.
I second.
Thanks, Allison. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
I.
Oppose? Okay, and absentees will abstain. Meeting minutes of June 15 approved. Moving on to June 22. We have both a public session and a private session, or closed session, I should say. So let's begin with the meeting minutes of June 22, public session. Any corrections or comments? Okay, I move to approve the public session meetings of June 22.
Second.
Dan, all in favor? Hi.
I.
Oppose? Okay, and abstentions of anybody who was not there for the closed session meeting on June 22. Eileen, I think I actually did have one comment. I'm sorry, I have to go to the right folder. I somehow closed it. Just one of the words, it was like noted instead of notes or vice versa. Let me just find the. In line 76, which is like the next to last sentence.
Okay, got it.
It just says must be a duly noticed hearing. Do you see that?
Yep, got it.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else had any comments. I'll just give it a moment. Okay, with that change, I move to approve the minutes from the closed session, June 22. Anybody second?
I second.
Allison, all in favor? Hi.
I.
Any opposed? Okay, and any absentees will abstain. Meeting minutes from June 22. Both sessions are approved and next meeting set of meeting minutes. Oh. Apologies, I just minimized my wrong screen. Okay, July 6, 2022. Any comments or corrections? Great, I move to approve the minutes of July 6, 2022. Have a second. Second, Gaston, thank you. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, and absentees will abstain, meeting minutes of July 6, 2022 approved. And our last batch, July 20, 2022. Anybody have any comments or corrections? Okay, I approve to, I move to approve the July 20, 2022 meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor? Okay. Oppose? Okay, meeting minutes from July 20th, 2022 approved. Tongue twisters. Okay, thank you. Our first application tonight, or our first and only application tonight is 22022 Minor Site Plan Approval for her MD. I think we would bring in Counsel.
Madam Chair, if I can just interject for a second, I just wanted to show this to.
Ah, thank you, thank you, Srini. Okay, I dare you.
See that, that's terrific. Srini, if you could just scan that and send it with the return email that I sent it to you on, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll just do it now.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Saricello, welcome. Hopefully you can turn your camera and audio and let us know who should be brought in from your side.
Please call in John Chase, Dr. Somi Javad, Harold Malts, Richard Keller.
Okay, I think that's everybody you summoned. There we go. Okay, everybody being present, I turn it to you to begin.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Anthony Saricello. I'm with the Law Offices of Levitt and Saricello in Milburn. On behalf of the property owner, Milburn Common Associates. The subject site is a multi-tenanted mixed-use property located at 227 Milburn Avenue, known as the Milburn Commons. Milburn Common Associates seeks to replace a beauty salon with a medical use tenant, her MD, in a vacant unit facing Milburn Avenue. Her MD provides women with comprehensive healthcare, from gynecology and menopause to sexual medicine to medical aesthetics. We appear before this board for site plan approval because there is a increase in the parking spaces requirement resulting for a mixed use. The increase in required parking spaces from the prior user is six spaces. The property contains 359 onsite parking spaces, and the parking spaces have been underutilized for years. Harold Malts has prepared a parking inventory analysis underscoring the adequacy of the existing parking in support of the parking variance. We require one waiver from a checklist item elevations with materials and dimensions. We require two variances. The first are two loading spaces for the property and six parking spaces. There is no, there is no formal loading spaces on the property. We have received and reviewed your professional reports and our witnesses will address open comments. I filed proof of service and publication with the Board Secretary. I have our four witnesses that I've mentioned previously. If there are no questions, I'd like to call my first witness.
Thanks, I'm happy to, and I'd just like to remind folks, if you're not speaking to mute, just so we don't get accidental feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. I called John Chase.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chase will have, will have you sworn in. We'll just have Eric do that.
Okay, Mr. Chase, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name for the record, please.
John L. Chase Jr.
Mr. Chase, can you give the board the benefit of your academic and professional qualifications in the field of architecture?
Yes, sir. I am a graduate of Louisiana State University with a Bachelor's of Architecture in 1991. I've been practicing in the field since graduation in May of 1991. First became Licensed Architect in 1995. Hold a license in Louisiana and 23 other states, including the beautiful state of New Jersey.
And is your license currently active?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Madam Chair, I, I move that he be declared an expert witness in the field of architecture.
Thank you, we will welcome you as such.
Mr. Chase, can you please walk through the floor plan for the board? Starting with, starting with the Milburn Avenue side.
And Mr. Chase and Mr. Saricello, as you may be aware, as you introduce any, if you're going to share your screen and introduce images, will ask us to label them. I don't know if the intention is to share your screen.
I can, I can happily do that.
Okay, and
with the floor plan.
Counsel may give you suggestions on how he'd like to title them, just for consistency sake.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
So. I'm assuming everyone can now see my screen?
We can.
Yes, so Mr. Chase, you could label this Exhibit A1.
Okay.
Can you just tell us what that is, Mr. Chase?
Yes, so this is the floor plan of the tenant space that our client, her MD, is leasing in this multi-tenant building.
Thank you.
So, and apologize, you asked me to start from Milburn Avenue, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at the Milburn Avenue side, this door here will be an exit door from their break room. As you come out of the break room, there is a staff restroom and a charting area for the medical professionals to complete their charts. Moving up the corridor, everything on the north side, plan north, is aesthetic medicine. So it's the cool sculpting room as well as spa rooms that they will be doing facials and other things. To the south side here is the medical practice area. So we have an ultrasound room with a restroom and some storage for for the day-to-day type equipment or supplies needed to operate this, you know, the ultrasound room. And the restroom, obviously, for the patient. We also have three gynecology examination rooms along the south side of the corridor. In the middle is a small lab space for them to draw blood, take blood pressure, and some things along that nature. There's also another restroom on the spa side here as, and a blood draw room with a small storage closet. There is office space to the front, or actually to the back, to the parking lot side, and a very small lobby for seating of four people as well as two employees. Currently, our space is laid out in the same manner as the existing tenant that was there before, which was a hair salon. So they were proposing to leave the, all the egress and, and everything as was originally designed.
Mr. Chase, would you kindly address the township's planners' report specifically on page 4, Section 4, Items B through E?
Okay, so that is for facade signage. Excuse me. So we are, and I apologize, I need to open the signage package, which I did not have up or head up in a closing. We are proposing signs on the front and rear of the facility. The the sign that is being proposed for the Milburn Avenue side is being proposed as a illuminated sign, backlit. And I'm assuming y'all can see my screen now. I have the signage package up. This is a graphic representation.
Mr. Chase, let me please interrupt you. I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Describe what plans these are and then label it A2.
Yes, sir. So this is the her MD signage company has put together a signage package for their approval and for use on this facility in Milburn, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So what is shown here, sorry. So we have a site plan where they have a sign that says A1 and here A2. This is sign A1, which will be on the Milburn Avenue side. It is a channel letter sign that is affixed to the facade with a series of pins and is also backlit with an LED lighting source. And the sign is proposed to be eight feet, eight and three-eighths inches long by two feet high. And it will sit, I didn't put the dimension there, it'll sit roughly from face of sign to the, to the wall, three inches off of the wall. The and this is how they propose on backlitting it. It's a acrylic sign or it's it's a brush stainless sign with an acrylic back to allow the light source to be enclosed and diffuse the light properly. The rear or, or the parking lot side is proposed to have a similar sign that will not be illuminated. But it will be the same size and dimensions. It will sit one inch off of the face of the facade. The facades as calculated, the Milburn Avenue side, our area is approximately 301.58 square feet. The rear is approximately 542.08 square feet of area. And to address the, there is a comment about proposed signage for the Milburn Avenue site. Our client proposes putting a graphic on the door to indicate that the main entrance is on the parking lot side of the facility. And I think that should address all of those comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chase. Madam Chairwoman, I have no further questions of Mr. Chase at this time.
Okay, thank you. If I can ask you to unshare your screen, thank you, so we can see one another. I will, I'm just gonna state this once so that all participants on the board, as well as members of the public, understand how we're gonna proceed. Now, when each witness provides their testimony, the planning board will then have the opportunity to ask questions, which is where we're at right now. Following that, we open it up. If any members of the public have questions for that applicant on their testimony, you can do that using the raise hand function. We'll bring you in. You can ask any questions. After we hear all applicants' witnesses' testimony, if any members of the public want to make a comment on the record, they will have the opportunity to raise their hand and I will ask that and they can come in and make a comment on the application as a whole, should they have any. So I should have said that a little earlier, but that's where we're gonna proceed from here. That said, do any members of the planning board have questions for Mr. Chase based on his testimony? Please, you can just raise your physical hand and I can see you. Deborah Nevis.
Hi, Mr. Chase, I'm just wondering about the sign in terms of the illumination. Is this a sign that's going to be lit 24/7?
No, ma'am, it's proposed that there's a, a time clock that will come on at sunset and go off at sunrise.
And how bright is the light gonna be? How much light is it gonna cast?
It, it's a backlit halo sign, so it's not projecting any light. See if I can get back to it. I mean, basically what you see here. I mean, basically what you see here, it's a, it's just a kind of a strip uh LED light that's woven in in there, so it's not, it's kind of like a tape light. It's not putting out any light. It probably won't illuminate on that wall past more than about six inches from the sign.
Okay.
And the the intent is to glow the walls so that the letters are shown at night.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mister Chase. I had one question. I know you sort of provided the square footages of the proposed signs. I just wanted to confirm, do those fit within the zoning allowable?
No, the areas I provided were of the facade that was asked for by the um in planning comment on number, on item D. Um, the sign is seventeen point five nine square feet and it does fall within your zoning regulations.
Great, thank you for confirming that. Thank you. Other questions from board members? Okay, at this time, do any members of the public have questions for Mister Chase based on his testimony? And if so, you can use the the raise hand function and zoom. Okay, seeing none, we turn it back to you, Mister Sersillo.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Um, I'd like to call Doctor Somi Javed.
Present.
Okay, Doctor, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name for the record, spell your name, please.
Doctor Somi, S O M I, last name is Javed, J A V A I D.
Thank you.
Doctor Javed, could you please give the board the benefit of your academic and professional qualifications in women's health?
Yes. Uh, hello, everybody. I am a board-certified OB GYN with nearly twenty years of clinical experience. I am considered a thought leader in the space of women's healthcare, particularly in menopause. I sit on multiple advisory boards and write standards of care. I lead and participate in clinical research trials and I have been called upon um even by the FDA for expert opinion regarding women's healthcare. I am the founder and chief medical officer of Her M D.
And and Doctor, could you tell the board what is Her M D and what types of services will be provided?
So we are a women's healthcare facility. We practice bread and butter gynecology with a deep specialty in menopause. We also have ultrasound imaging available, um and we have aesthetic services as well.
Why did you select Milburn Township for a medical office?
Uh, because we've had hundreds and thousands of women reach out from the East Coast uh asking for this type of healthcare. Our two current locations have brought in women from thirty-five states and three countries. Uh, we just announced um our Nashville books to be open and we have a three-hundred-person waitlist already. Um, so Milburn met the demographic that we were looking for and we were just so excited to treat the women of Milburn and bring them insurance-based menopausal care. And what do I mean by that? Most experts like myself, they're cash-based only, making it very uh difficult for women to access this type of healthcare. Less than twenty percent of OB GYNs nationally are trained and those that are, like I said, are usually cash or concierge, making it prohibitive for most women. And so we have a unique opportunity to serve um the women of Milburn and the surrounding areas.
Thank you. Uh, let's talk about the operation of of the office for now. Are patients allowed to walk in or is it appointment only?
It's appointment only.
And are appointments staggered or or what?
Appointments are definitely staggered. In Her M D was founded on the principles of education, advocacy, and empowerment. And part of that is being very respectful of our patients' time. So we purposely have very few chairs um in the waiting room and we stagger our appointments so that we don't overload our lobby.
And can you tell the board the number of physicians and number of support staff members that will be on site at one time?
Yeah, so we will have one M D and uh one nurse practitioner and then with the supporting staff, we should have uh eight to ten employees when we open.
And will you ever be on site in Milburn?
I will be on site. Um, I am the chief medical officer to ensure that our practices are being carried through at all of our locations. I do side-by-sides. And I mentioned that I'm a little bit of an expert, so I also will perform lectures and continuing education for those providers, so they are offering our patients the best of the best care.
And what would be the proposed hours and days of operation of your office?
So typically, our offices are open Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty. Occasionally, we have uh two evening hours a month, um if patients are asking for those hours. And that will be eleven A M to, um, well, no, I take that back. So we'll still open at eight, um, but we'll extend to six-thirty, um, two nights a month if demand is there.
Uh, how will her M D handle receiving deliveries since there's no loading space?
We don't have large deliveries. Typically, they're brought to the front and because they are medical in nature, they have to be signed off on by one of the staff members and then we take it into our inventory, log it, and put it in the appropriate locations.
And are the vehicles that deliver such items the size of a Federal Express or UPS or?
Or or smaller.
Or small, okay. Uh, and and how will her M D dispose of medical waste?
So we don't have much, right? Because we're not infusing chemotherapy or drugs like that. So we have very small biohazard bins in each of the rooms and um medical waste services come in um and collect those items on a set schedule.
What's the frequency usually?
Usually once weekly.
Okay. And where would they they be stored uh during?
In a clearly marked red biohazard bin that is typically affixed to the wall.
Thank you.
On a table.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chairwoman, I have no further questions of Doctor Javed at this time.
Great. Um, you just spoke to disposal of biohazard waste. What about traditional trash? I didn't, I didn't hear if you provided testimony on that. Just regular garbage.
Regular garbage with.
And recyclables, thank you. And recyclables, yes.
So whatever the town is doing, in all of our other markets, we use just the traditional services that will pick up um the garbage.
And I believe, uh, Eileen, you can speak to that, but that is, uh, is it typically private for commercial uses? Or is there a a public garbage pickup at that um site?
I believe it's private, calling private carding. Um, but I'd have to check into that. But I believe it is all private in there.
Okay, Doctor Javed, would you be uh willing to testify that you would um sign on and and comply with private garbage disposal and recycling?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, and I believe it's provided by the property owner as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, additional questions from planning board members? Great. Any questions from members of the public for Doctor Javed? Okay, thank you. Um, hearing none, uh, we can have you continue.
Thank you. I I call Mister Harold Malts.
Okay, Mister Malts, could we just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name um for the record, please.
Harold K. Malts, M A L T Z.
Mister Malts, can you give the planning board the benefit of your academic and professional qualifications in traffic engineering? Including any work you did in Milburn?
Yes, um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey by test for the past forty-nine years. I should state, I'm a principal of the firm of Hamel Associates Incorporated, located in West Orange, New Jersey. I hold the Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the Newark College of Engineering. I hold the Master of Science in Civil Engineering from the Newark College of Engineering. And I have a Master of Science in Environmental Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have fifty-three years of experience as a transportation engineer specializing in both traffic and highway engineering. And coincidentally, I previously served as an adjunct on the faculty of the New Jersey Institute of Technology, for whom I had previously taught a seminar on highway engineering to employees of the New Jersey DOT at their main facility in Ewing Township. Um, I've appeared well over a thousand times in front of municipal boards, including this one, as well as the Milburn Board of Adjustment. In fact, most of my work uh currently from my firm is representing municipal boards in various townships uh and boroughs in in the state. Um, I've done, in fact, in the past, I've also worked for the Milburn Planning Board uh doing a re- review, for example, of the residential hotel complex now being constructed next to Short Hills Mall. I've also provided services to the township uh regards to Phase One of the improvements that were done on Milburn Avenue. There was some engineering questions that I addressed. So I've I've been involved in both sides uh in this regard.
Madam Chair, I I move that he be qualified as an expert in the field of traffic engineering.
That is fine. May I just first clarify, is your, uh, it's a P E or your license, is it?
Yes, I'm a P E. I'm licensed. Yes, it's active and good standing. I'm also licensed in New York and Pennsylvania.
Thank you. We are happy to hear you as a traffic engineer. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Mister Malts, what have you reviewed, investigated, and prepared in anticipation of your testimony this evening?
Yes, there was a report I prepared that stated October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, which is parking surveys and evaluation for Milburn Commons mixed-use buildings. Uh, specifically, uh, and as you noted, there's a change uh in use of one lease area from a hair salon to the medical office use for her M D. Uh, based on municipal ordinance, the medical office requires one space per hundred fifty square feet, which would be twenty-four spaces for the medical office. The salon covered in retail is one space for two hundred square feet, which would be eighteen spaces required. Consequently, this use, as you noted, requires six additional spaces to be provided. The existing site uh has three hundred and fifty-nine spaces. It's not proposed as part of this application to change the parking lot or available parking uh at all uh required by ordinance as, and I have a exhibit attached. Uh, the uh numbers were prepared by Mister Richard Keller, Casey and Keller, who's here tonight. Uh, required by ordinance is five hundred and seventeen spaces for what the uses are on site with the six additional for the medical office. That would be then five hundred and twenty-three uh spaces. Uh, specifically, uh, my firm was retained to perform parking surveys at the Milburn's common uh common site on two weekdays and a Saturday uh to identify the existing occupied and conversely, the vacant spaces within the site. Uh, and the vacant parking spaces that were available would be evaluated against the increased parking required to the medical office use. And I would note that the hair salon, uh, at the time I did the surveys was vacant, so it was not generating anything. In terms, uh, in that regard, uh consequently, as the hair salon was closed, it was not generating any parking demand into my survey areas on the times it was done. To reflect the worst-case condition, all twenty-four spaces that were needed for the medical office by ordinance, I applied in the in part my parking evaluation instead of just the six spaces uh needed between the two uses. Essentially, it compensates for the closed salon. The, I did one other uh analysis, which is to perform a uh uh a peak parking demand for a medical office site based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication, Parking Generation, the fifth edition for the medical office use. And these are this parking generation rate from this source is based on actual parking studies for a very high level. In fact, it was the highest rate shown on the tables for that use in the I T source. The eighty-fifth percentile peak parking demand for this size uh facility was seventeen spaces based on actual studies. That's seven less than the ordinance requirement. I just point this out for information purposes, but I used the twenty-four spaces by municipal ordinance in performing my evaluation. The uh survey areas on Exhibit One in my, the back of my report, the lots were summarized. It shows a site plan and all the parking fields, spaces. Uh, the lots were summarized at the two areas, known as A and B. Survey Area A was a hundred and fifty-four spaces. It's on the northwest corner of the property and it's a rectangular-shaped area. And the medical office, which is proposed, uh, is noted on that exhibit. And it's located opposite Area A. This area is identified because it's the most probable area that uh employees and patients going to this office, medical office, would use. Uh, the survey area B has two hundred and five spaces and it contains all the rest of the parking on the site, which is the east of the building and that one parking aisle on the north side in the middle of the site that connects between A and the north and the east side parking. Uh, in terms of the parking surveys themselves, uh, time periods, uh, there was, I performed one survey on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two on a Thursday from nine A M to six P M. The second weekday was September ninth, the very next day, on Friday from nine A M to six P M. And the third was on Saturday, September tenth, from nine A M to twelve noon. I should note, it was originally my intention to stay out there on Saturday to six P M, but I discontinued the survey at twelve o'clock because there was such significant and continuing vacancy throughout the site. As I'm gonna discuss in a moment, the the entire site as well as the survey area A was running ninety-nine, excuse me, ninety to ninety-five percent vacant in every single survey period. So I discontinued it after twelve because it wasn't changing. The surveys were performed in thirty-minute intervals. At the times of the survey, weather was good. It was normal business days and schools were in normal session. Uh, and I should note, a representative of the applicant advised me that all leasable space was occupied except the proposed medical office site. Okay, in terms of the uh survey results, which I identified the vacant parking for the September eighth Thursday uh survey, the entire site had its lowest vacancy. In other words, the least amount of vacant spaces at eleven A M with a hundred and seventy-nine spaces. At the start, at nine A M, there were two hundred and twenty-three spaces vacant. And between three to six P M, the vacancy uh went up from a hundred ninety-seven to three-ten uh area-wide. This is certainly far greater than the twenty-four we're talking about. Isolating out Survey Area A, at nine A M at the start, there were seventy-two spaces vacant. The lowest vacancy occurred at eleven A M in the morning with sixty-eight and two P M, uh sixty-nine. And between three and six P M, the vacancy went from eighty-seven to a hundred and twenty-four spaces. And thirdly, uh, Area B had its lowest vacancy at eleven A M with a hundred and eleven spaces and three to three-thirty with a hundred and ten. Looking at Table One in my report, which summarizes this entire day, there was more than adequate vacancy in the survey area A to satisfy the twenty-four space medical office use with the lowest observed uh uh vacancy in Area A, which was sixty-eight spaces at eleven A M, deducting the twenty-four spaces required for the medical office in the worst case, would leave forty-four remaining uh vacant spaces in the area lot, which is about twenty-nine percent of all the spaces in that entire lot. Essentially, Survey Area A, as well as the entire site, it was underutilized. Moving on to September ninth, which is Friday for the same nine, six P M, um, had similar results for the entire site. The lowest vacancy was at eleven A M with a hundred ninety, a hundred seventy-nine spaces, two hundred and twenty-four spaces vacant at the start. And between two and six P M, vacancy were extended from two hundred to And between two and six PM, vacancy extended from two hundred to three-twenty-seven at the end. More importantly, isolating survey area A, there were ninety-eight vacant spaces at nine AM at the start. The lowest vacancy was at eleven AM and eleven and one-thirty, seventy-seven spaces at that time. And in the one-thirty to six PM range, it went from seventy-seven to a hundred and thirty-five. And then briefly for area B, the lowest vacancy was at eleven AM with a hundred and two. For, based on table two, which summarizes the survey data, it's the same conclusion as on the Thursday service, survey. The lowest observed vacancy in area A was seventy-seven at eleven AM. Deduct the twenty-four leaves you fifty-three spaces vacant. Not much different than Thursday. The patterns were very, very consistent. And then finally, for the shortened September tenth, Saturday survey from nine to twelve, as I noted, the Saturday survey was discontinued after twelve noon due to significant continued parking vacancy. The entire site range of vacancy was three hundred and nineteen to three hundred and thirty-eight spaces in this entire three-hour time period. Remember, it's only three hundred and fifty-four on the whole site, so most of the site was vacant. And area A alone, the vacancy ranged from a hundred and thirty-eight to one forty-six. And that leaves a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and twenty-two for the medical, with the medical office use. I would note, the parking vacancy was irrelevant on Saturday. In addition, as the doctor testified, they're not going to be open on Saturday. So Saturday becomes a moot point. Finally, in conclusion, the change from a hair salon, which requires eighteen spaces to a medical office for twenty-four, results in six additional spaces required by the municipal ordinance. The hair salon was closed at the time of the survey. There was no parking demand generated therefore from this space. So in the worst case, I applied the twenty-four spaces required by the municipal office ordinance for the medical office. This compensates for the vacant hair salon space. The worst case identified for the medical office in area A was the lowest on Thursday at eleven AM with sixty-eight spaces, deducting twenty-four, you still have forty-four remaining, about twenty-nine percent of survey area A. In our professional opinion, it's our professional opinion that the small number of additional parking spaces required by municipal ordinance for the proposed change in use from a hair salon to a medical office can be more than adequately accommodated with the nearby parking area A and certainly within the entire site. The parking lot is currently underutilized, and that completes my testimony.
Madam Chairwoman, I have no follow-up questions for Mr. Maltz.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Maltz? Mr. Bear?
Just, Mr. Maltz, just for clarification purposes, you originally, you originally stated that Rich Keller's firm did the counts for you.
No, no, no. They, they summarized the parking required for the various uses on site. They didn't do the counts.
So they did the counts. You did all the observations and all the counts?
Yes, except for about two and a half hours on Thursday and, and Friday in the early afternoon because it's a nine-hour stretch and I needed to have some relief. So someone, a technician from Mr. Keller's offices, which is nearby, came out and provided me a break for lunch and whatever during that time. I did everything on Saturday. Essentially, out of the nine hours each on Thursday and Friday, I did six and a half hours out of the nine each day and the three hours on Saturday.
Well, okay, thank you. And, and then you talked about developing trip, a trip rate for the use. What did, what category of did you use in the trip generation manual? For this particular use?
Parking generation. Parking generation manual. That's land use code number seven-twenty, which is medical dental office. That's how it's defined.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Any questions from members of the public for Mr. Maltz, based on his testimony? Raise your hand at this time. Okay, seeing none, back to you, counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I call Mr. Richard Keller.
Okay, Mr. Keller, right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony?
No, go ahead.
Do you swear from testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, and about the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Your name for the record.
Richard Keller, K E L L E R.
Mr. Sisalo, I just would ask, so we don't forget, you mentioned it in your opening that you were requesting a waiver, checklist waiver. Perhaps you could have Mr. Keller just cover that at the beginning. You know, usually we do those at the, at the beginning because if the waiver's not granted, you don't have a complete application and therefore we can't conduct the hearing. I recognize that this was a extremely minor one, so I didn't ask you to call Mr. Keller or someone else, but why don't we handle that first? We can get that off the table and then, thank you.
Mr. Bouzek, I do appreciate that and thank you. Mr. Keller, first, please give the board the benefit of your qualifications and academic ones in engineering and planning.
Yes, good evening. I am a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed as an engineer in nineteen eighty-nine and a planner in nineteen ninety. I held a bachelor of civil engineering from Rutgers University with a declared concentration in water resources and environmental engineering. I also hold a master's in architecture with a concentration in urban planning and design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also an adjunct professor for eleven years. I have testified before this board, the board, the Board of Adjustment, approximately a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey as both a planner and engineer. I have also offered consulting. I've been retained to do consulting, planning services to the Borough Caldwell Board of Adjustment. And I've also represented the township of South Orange Village and the township of Long Hill Planning Board and Board of Adjustments as, as a plant, as an engineering consultant. I just took fourteen hours of additional educational training last week, so my licenses are in good effect and they will be in the next two years. It's good to see you tonight.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that he be qualified as an expert in both engineering and planning.
Great. And is that just confirm civil engineering?
Yes.
Okay, great. Civil engineering and planning. We will hear you as such. Welcome back, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
Mr. Keller, could you address the waiver request, please?
Yes, we had one waiver request, and that was for architectural elevations and signage, and it was really a technicality. We tried to be very look at the words very specifically. We'll fill the checklist out. We did not have architectural elevations. But what we did have was the sign package, which included photographs of the sign over which the signage was superimposed. So we think it meets the intent of the ordinance, but since they weren't actually drafted as architectural elevations, we did notice for a waiver in that.
Thank you, Mr. Sisalo. Madam Chair, I think we should just take care of this now. As I said, we usually do it at the beginning of the meeting, but let's do it so we don't forget. We'll get to the end of Mr. Keller's testimony. There's a request for a waiver for checklist item for architectural elevations and signage. Mr. Keller's testified as to what they did provide, what seems to be the sum and substance of really what we need, but nevertheless, they requested the waiver motion. If, if you agree that it should be waived, I would ask that someone give a, provide a motion to waive that checklist item.
Thank you, counsel. I will make a motion to waive the checklist item as described just above. Anybody second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Is that a roll call vote, Eileen?
Yes, we should have Ms. Dabbitt take that, please.
Yes. Yes, on Halbert?
Yes.
Shreem VJ?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Megan Miggins?
Yes.
Corey Biller?
Yes.
Allison Camfield?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Thank you. With that said, feel free to carry on with your testimony.
Mr. Keller, what have you reviewed, investigated for your, for purposes of your testimony tonight?
My firm has visited the site many times. We prepared the base survey. We prepared the site plan. Minor site plan application that you have as part of your package this evening. We also reviewed the master plan, as well as the architectural plans, the sign plans, as well as Mr. Maltz's survey.
What approvals are required for this application?
We need minor site plan approval. And we need a variance for parking and for loading spaces.
Can you get into that for us, please?
Yep, I'd like to share the screen and go over and briefly go through my site plan.
Thank you. And I think we'll begin with marking. I think we're up to A three, but I might be wrong.
Yeah, this is A three. And this is the site plan package that was submitted to the board. It's a two-sheet set, starting with the, the cover sheet, which is cover sheet area and zoning maps. And if we look at the, I think luckily everyone knows where this site is. It's a five-point-one acre site that's located on the north side of Milburn Avenue, near the intersection of Wyoming and Milburn Avenue. It is actually a through lot, so it has frontage on both Wyoming and Milburn, but because Wyoming is rising up to an elevated crossing over the railroad to the north, there's no access to Wyoming Avenue. We're sort of surrounding on the corner, the, the Wyoming Dry Cleaners, as well as the Genius Gem site on the corner, which was a bank for a while. And if you remember back, it was actually the, in the old days, it was a blockbuster video. The, the site is located immediately adjacent to the Old Annie Says and just, just to the east of the start of the B four central business district, which you can see in, we have a copy of the town's zoning map on the right side. And I have two corrections to make. The first correction is that the town map and our drawings refer to this as being the B two highway business district. Back on July nineteenth, there was a new ordinance that changed this to the B two C zone. So they, they broke up the B two zone into three different regions. This one here on Milburn Avenue being designated as the B two C zone. And while there were a number of additional zoning criteria added to the B two zone, none of them are affected by the application. So the fact that it's the B two C zone, no new variants, no variances are required as to any of the bulk conditions, and that's largely because we're not changing anything. If we go over to the second sheet.
Let's mark that A four, Mr. Keller.
Apparently, A four will be the site plan, and this is, although it says sheet one on the bottom, it is the second sheet in your set, site plan. And we have the site survey, as well as the zoning table, as well as the parking counts shown on this. If we look at the site, this is actually an interesting site in that it was kind of an early example of adaptive reuse in that a lot of the, the buildings that are on Milburn Avenue were a series of sing, single lots, one and two-story buildings that were aggregated, put together by Milburn, by the common, commonly known as Milburn Common, and kind of skinned with a similar facade material. And then there was a new two-story building that was built next to that, and then spanning over, taking advantage of the topography, spanning over an access road into another series of two-story buildings, and then finally a one-story building that sits over the parking lot up to the east side. The, the subject property is the proposed RMD. It is flanked by the, on the west side, anchoring the west corner of this strip is the Santander Bank. We're the next spot in, which as was indicated, was the former subway salon site, which is a retail service use and immediate left next to a physical rehab space immediately to our right. Milburn Avenue does not allow any parking along Milburn Avenue for the entire stretch from Wyoming Avenue into wrapping around into Essex Street. All vehicles who come to the site either come into the westerly driveway or the easterly driveway. The westerly driveway opening into what Mr. Maltz referred to as this sort of primary parking lot that's immediately beside, behind the proposed MD. There are thirty-six tenants in this overall mall, in this overall office space or mixed-use space, representing about ninety thousand one hundred square feet of gross floor area. The tenant space itself, the proposed RMD, is thirty-six hundred square feet. And as indicated, right behind us, separating us from the residential portion in the Wyoming District, is the, the railroad tracks, the Erie Lacawanna Conrail site that's immediately to our behind. So the parking is all nestled well behind the existing building in two sides, on the left, on the west into the east, all taking advantage of the topography. The second correction is that we originally counted three hundred and sixty spaces. Mr. Maltz counted three hundred and fifty-eight. We put our heads together. In other words, I, I went back out and counted, and there were actually three hundred and fifty-nine. So Mr. Maltz's report that came later does reflect, reflect correctly that there are three hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces on the site. And that was the second correction I had to make. With regard to the zoning, as was indicated, we need variances from two sections. One is loading spaces. Two are required for the entire complex. This property has never had a loading space, and we're not proposing any. There's no place to put one. Parking, as was indicated in our parking calculations, for the thirty-six hundred square feet, the criteria goes from one per two hundred up to one per one fifty, which is a net increase of six spaces. Overall, the requirement on the site goes from five hundred and seventeen spaces up to five hundred and twenty-three spaces, where three hundred and fifty-nine, not three hundred and sixty are available, which looks pretty scary at the start, which is why we, it defied. Anyone who's been back there for a medical appointment or been back at the offices know that there's always parking available, which is why we retain the services, Mr. Maltz, to, to, to do accurate counts. I would also point out with regard to the parking, there are two areas that parking, not parking, but loading. There are two areas that loading does occur. They're all behind the building because again, there's no parking in the front. The first area tends to be right in front of the proposed RMD and a little bit in front of the bank because there's a wide area for cars to navigate around trucks. And then finally, a little further down that driveway, the driveway opens up into an area where a UPS or an Amazon truck can pull out of the way and not inhibit parking. And I would point out underneath this, where the building, where this driveway comes under the building, this is actually where the UPS, I think it's still UPS and FedEx pickup are under here. So there's the drop-off spot. The FedEx vehicles often are under this, under this canopy or as indicated, there is ample space for them to drop off right in, almost in front of the proposed RMD. The, any of the vehicles, occasionally there are some larger trucks that service the restaurant, the Chinese restaurant, and they all park down underneath this canopy or to get out of the elements. The, if you look at the site, it is a fully developed site. There is landscape around the periphery. It takes advantage of the topography, but there is no place on this site to either carve out more parking spaces, and there's no space to certainly add any loading spaces, and this site has not had a history of needing that. I would point out that management handles all pickup of garbage. There is no dumpsters up, there are no dumpsters on the site. There are no refuse area, recycling and, and refuse is handled by management and/or the individual cleaning companies that clean the spaces on behalf of each of the tenants. So there is no, there is no issue with, with any of the pickup. It's all done privately. So with regard to the engineering, it was pretty simple. There are no changes. There's no, there's no additional building area. There's no impervious area. There's no changes in the circulation or driveways. The only changes will be the signage along the front and rear facades. So the only reason that we're before this board is because that change of tendency does increase the parking by six spaces. So that triggers the need for a minor site plan. And that's why we're before the planning board tonight, because I imagine you don't see many change of use app, change of tendency applications. The fact that the, the Milburn Common is already deficient in parking, even though it's underutilized, technically it's deficient in parking, that means that we also trigger the need for, for parking variance. And because we are technically in the, the planning terms, we're intensifying the use on the site, it does mean that we have to revisit that variance for the site for loading spaces. So we need the variance. the variance, minor site plan approval with the two variances. With regard to the planning proofs, and I'll leave this up for a second, because I may come back when I talk about the negative criteria. You know, generally, the standard defense or the standard argument for the positive criteria in support of a parking variance in a fully developed site is a C one variance, where the location of the lawfully existing structures, the building, the parking lot, the layout locks you in, and it's impossible to add parking without either demolishing parts of the building, or in some cases eliminating landscape there. But in this case, with the topography, you really don't even have that ability, even the area above the, further to the east of the building, there's a, there's a significant topographic relief, which is why the the walks take a circuitous path to mitigate the topography. So even in this area, it's difficult to get parking in that area. And I think it would be not very environmentally sensitive to take away additional lawn and tree areas to provide parking when the lot is in fact underutilized. So generally, we see it as a C one variance. And I'll talk about the negative criteria in a second. But I think in this one, in this case, especially for this applicant, it also can be argued under C two, where the the purposes of the Land Use Act are advanced from the deviation of zoning ordinance requirements. In this case, we look at the purposes of the Land Use Act under forty fifty five D two. Right away, number A is the promotion of public health and general welfare. This clearly contributes to the well being of women. As was discussed by Dr. Guevay, her M D provides comprehensive women's healthcare all under one roof, which is sensitive to the intricacies of medical insurance. The whole bit of the medical insurance was shocking to me. I had no idea. It also advances section G of the Municipal Land Use Act under the purposes, which is to provide for sufficient space, sufficient space in appropriate location for a variety of commercial uses. So it's it's tailor made for this. This is actually becoming a marquee area for medical uses within the community between St. Barnabas, between the Urology Center of New Jersey. This is becoming a medical center, and even still, you can see that it's underutilized in terms of its parking, and it's an appropriate space for M D to move into. It will actually attract, it's a marquee use. It's nice to attract national businesses to our community. And I think it'll be additive to not only this, this center, but to the community in general. With regard to the, so we think it advances two purposes of the Land Use Act, with regard to the negative criteria. We need to demonstrate that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and there'll be no substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I think Mr. Malz's, I can actually take that down, stop sharing. I think Mr. Malz's reports demonstrates that the existing three hundred and fifty nine car parking lot is considerably underutilized. There's more than adequate parking on site, both in the parking area directly behind the tenant space and certainly across the entire site to accommodate the twenty four spaces required. Milburn Common actually has always acted as a self contained site that manages all of its parking on site and its deliveries. And you never see it. You may see a moving truck. You may see a food delivery. You may see a truck in the downtown. You've never seen one on the site. I could almost guarantee it. We would love for residents from South Mountain to walk to the site, but the reality is almost everyone drives. And that's okay, because there's plenty of parking on site. With regard to the deliveries, they're screened from view. There's adequate space for the type of deliveries and pickups this will receive. There's adequate space on site as as it has existed for the other eighty six thousand square feet of tenant space that's fully occupied now. So we certainly think there's no detriment to the public good. We think that there's also no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and master plan. This is a permitted use within the zone. That's always the first place we start. From the goals and objectives from the master plan, the two thousand eighteen master plan, goal and objective, I'm starting on page number forty three. The goal is to encourage appropriate land uses to promote the character of the township. It was a small suburb of the highest quality. I think having one, an M, her M D here, one of the few in the in the country as they continue to grow is a feather in our cap. And the objective one point oh two is to promote the development, the appropriate mix, excuse me, of development in the in commercial areas. Goal number four is to maintain and enhance the economic vitality of the downtown with the business districts. It's really wonderful to see a commercial area that is one hundred percent leased, and we'd like to keep it that way. And certainly, objective four point oh one is to promote opportunities for the highest quality commercial activity in all business districts. And I think this certainly applies. We think that this is a great use. I think that the, I think with regard to any of the planners' reports, I think I've addressed everything in the topology report. If I haven't, I think the applicant or Mr. or the architect has. The engineer's memorandum was basically supporting that there are no changes to the sites or there are no engineering issues, and and finding Mr. Malz's testimony consistent with, or accepted by the by the engineer. And I think that unless I have no other direct testimony, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just Mr. Sersila making sure you're you're set as well.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Questions from the board for Mr. Keller? Oh, Mr. Bouzak.
Mr. Keller, the applicant here is the owner of the site. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's not her M D.
No, the applicant in this case is the owner of the building.
You pointed out in your direct testimony that there were at least two areas where deliveries are made. One was a cutout area to the east, I guess, and one was an area almost in front of this site. Why would that, either of those locations, or perhaps some other location, be appropriate to install a loading space? It seems to me that there are deliveries. You pointed out where the delivery trucks park, and it's sort of like when people build sidewalks in complexes, and then you see everybody walking over the grass, because that's really where the sidewalk should have been, but because an architect decided it was going to be here for whatever reason, no one uses the sidewalk. Everyone cuts over the grass. And it's sort of the same concept here. You have two, at least two places where you can have a loading space. Why would that not be an appropriate manner in which to handle the lack of loading spaces?
Certainly. With regard to, and I'm going to share again quickly. There's, there are two areas where loading does occur, because there are areas that they are out of the way of vehicles that come around and can get around, vehicles can back up, and they don't block, and deliveries tend to be fairly short. Again, they're primarily small deliveries, less than a UPS size, was was the testimony by Dr. Guevay. The rest will be similar to any office building, paper, photocopy supplies, et cetera. And they tend to be quick. They tend to go throughout the entire site. I would suspect that that UPS driver probably parks in the one spot, moves down to the next spot, and then maybe moves up to the upper area where there's again some, there's a wide area at the back of the building in the rear. I think that to carve out additional loading space in front of her M D would carve out a loading space at the cost of what little, some little green space we have. I would be taking away lawn areas and tree areas to get a nestled area. We've always found that getting loading, getting UPS drivers, UPS drivers, Amazon drivers to park in a given spot where they may want to be going anywhere throughout is like herding cats. They're not going to park there. There is an adequate space already. Again, when the, when the road widens to go underneath the the building, again, if I was to try to widen that, it would be at the cost of either pedestrian circulation, or it would push pedestrian circulation into existing green spaces. So I think in terms of, that's another C two, sort of flexible C two argument, where I think it's better to let it function the way it always has for a fully developed property, and that's a better alternative than taking away what little green space and planting areas we have. I think it's a better, a better alternative.
How about on the other side of that, that you pointed out, we had a large area. And I wasn't suggesting necessarily that you you take away any green space, but there's always variances for a smaller size loading zone as opposed to the size that's provided in the ordinance. It just seems that the vehicles are going to be parking there anyway. This is not a situation where they double park on Milburn Avenue or some other street, and that's the way the deliveries are done. There's seems to be plenty of space here where you wouldn't have to cut into the green space, where you could provide at least one loading area. Whether it would be be conforming to the ordinance or slightly nonconforming. I find it hard to say that there's not a place here where you can put it.
I think when you, when you start laying over dimensions and put cars in, I think you'll see that if I, if I designate it, it would be significantly undersized. But again, when you've got thirty six tenants and you've got some twenty feet of topography, I think again, those UPS trucks are not going to park in one central spot, and then navigate upstairs through elevators up to this, up to the upper levels of the second floor. Again, these are, this this terrace is up the hill towards the railroad tracks. So when I come along this, this drive here, and I come under the building, I'm coming up slightly to this point. I come up significantly up to the back of the site and then navigate around, then I run, sort of I start dropping down towards the area towards the Annie Says. So there's no way, I think if I create a loading space, I I can't see it being used. First of all, it's going to, it will be significantly substandard, and I think the way that these drivers do now is they stop, they stop, they they sometimes stop, they come around the back, they stop, they stop, and then they leave. So I think that, again, we're not going to get a UPS, a FedEx or a UPS driver to take one dedicated area and then use truck dollys to go up topography or upstairs. You can see all of these are stairs that connect all these different layers. And so they're going to come to the door that's, they're going to park over here, because there's no doors to come into the upper suites. They're going to park wherever they don't have to deal with stairs. So the functionality of of, I think I'm either going to be slightly impeding traffic, or I'm going to be taking away green space to do it. And I think it's a better planning alternative to let it, let it function the way it has. That's my professional opinion.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ed, for bringing that up for discussion. Questions from other board members? Okay, do any members of the public have questions for Mr. Keller based on his testimony? Okay. Mr. Sersila, I don't want to speak for you, but you may want to conclude.
Now, just please welcome her M D into town.
Thank you. I will turn it first to if any members of the public have any testimony that they wanted to share. So if you wanted to make a statement on the record, now would be the time to do that. You can use the raise hand function. Just give that a moment. I see one. Okay, just give it a moment. We have Jerry Carmelo, if you're able to turn your camera on, and we can have you sworn in to give testimony. Hi, and great.
I just raise your right hand, please. You swear from testimony about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Carmelo, twenty Undercliffe Road, Milburn, New Jersey, zero seven zero four one.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I just wanted to say that I think her M D would be an extremely valuable business in New Jersey and in Milburn. I'm already on the waitlist. As a patient with PCOS, I'm used to having providers who don't listen to my health concerns or not knowledgeable about them like at all. So having a place like her M D would be great, because they empower patients to make informed decisions about their healthcare options and are more knowledgeable about women's healthcare than like a typical doctor's office would be. So I think it would be really life changing for the community and a good addition to the community to have.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Carmelo. I think we have another comment. Okay, Christina Langdon, similarly, if you're able to unmute and camera on, would be great. Hello.
If you would, if you would just raise your right hand, please. You swore from the testimony about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Christina Langdon, three sixteen Ashland Road, Summit, New Jersey. I also own a business on Morris Ave in Springfield, so Milburn's very close to me. And I just wanted to come and support her M D. I have been looking for this quality medical care for some time. I, three years ago, was diagnosed with AML leukemia, went through a year of treatment that left me with massive side effects, and trying to get care for some of my issues was very, very difficult. Most of the doctors I went to, fifteen minute appointments, and they typically, they deliver babies. Most OBGYNs are delivering babies. They don't specialize in repercussions from chemotherapy or menopause. And I recently went to an event with Somi, Dr. Somi Guevay, where she answered questions from people locally. And it's obvious that, I mean, there was like fifty women there. We don't have a lot of healthcare in this area that is directly to benefit all of the side effects of menopause. And I'm looking forward to them coming, where I can be treated, and I can be listened to, and I can be feeling as good as I should be feeling.
Thank you so much, Ms. Langdon, for for sharing. Appreciate it. I think we have another commenter. Great, Bing Bing, glow. She'll be with us.
Hello, hi.
We can't see you quite yet.
Sorry, is my video on?
It's very dark.
But it's very, it's like black where you are.
Oh, apologies. I'm not sure where my lighting is doing that.
I can sort of, I can see your smile.
It's really super dark. For that, I'm trying to see if I can get up and change the lighting. Maybe if I can use my phone as a light, that might help. Is that any better? No. Okay, sorry. But let me see if I can just turn on the light real quick.
Okay. Oh, there we go. We don't see you, but we see a room. There we go, okay.
Okay, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear, do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record, please, and spelling your name, spell your name, please.
Sorry, my name is Bing Bing, B I N G, B I N G, last name G U O, and I live on one hundred and seventeen Cypress Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Perfect. So I just wanted to say that as a professional in the public health space, and as a patient, I really just think that her M D's unique care model is sorely needed. This is a comprehensive solution for women across the US, and her M D is really going to increase just accessibility to critically important sexual and reproductive health needs that is just really sorely lacking.
Thank you so much, Ms. Glow. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other members of the public wanting to provide any testimony? Okay, great. Seeing none, I open it to the board for any discussion or any follow up. I know Ed gave us a little something to think about with regards to the variance on loading spaces, and I think my opinion was we heard pretty compelling and sufficient evidence on the the parking space requirement. Anybody have any additional thoughts or reactions? Okay. Seeing none, does anybody want to make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Okay, second.
Great, so it was guest on, and then Diane had the second. Great.
And that would be Madam Chair to to grant the two variances that were requested for loading, one for loading space, one for parking, to grant the minor site plan approval.
Uh and there would be the, the typical conditions, uh standard conditions that I call, I call them. Uh I don't think that there were any specific conditions that seemed to arise. As we went through this application. So I have not listed any. If any of the board members uh have. Something, please uh either put it on the record now or let me know when we do the resolution, uh because I don't, I don't have anything. This is a relatively. Uh uh direct uh application. Thank you.
Thanks, I just want to make sure for the record and I think we will capture it in the minutes um that the proposed signage um is, is fit within uh. Requirements by the, the town ordinances.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Guest on helper?
Yes.
Shmene Vijay?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Corey Villar?
Yes.
Allison Canfield?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Beth Zoll?
I'm pleased to say yes, and I say thank you to Dr. Javed for considering Melbourne for your next home too. We're excited to have you. Thanks so much.
Yes, thank you. We're very excited.
Thank you very much, okay. Um, we'll give it just a moment for um Eileen to remove uh those uh from our, the panel. Um before we move on with our next order of business tonight.
Uh Beth, do you need me to stay for this? It's.
I do not. You, only if you want to, Eric.
That's up to you.
You're, you're, you may be dismissed. Thank you for your services.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Good night.
Our next order of business is discussion of the historic preservation element proposal of the master plan. Um the intention of tonight is um, it's, it's labeled as discussion. Um this. Is something I'm just going to quickly give uh my version of an introduction as the, the chair of the planning board in terms of what I know so far. And then we'll open it up and certainly um have a discussion. So um. And Ed, I can turn it to you if there's anything um from a, a council perspective that you want to share as well. Um, as we all know, the, the planning board is the owner of our municipal master plan. Um as such, as was just mentioned, actually during the, the previous application. Um, we do a reexamination report. One was completed in twenty eighteen. During which time the planning board took about a year to review everything that uh said in our existing master plan. Make updates as we saw fit and we adopted a master plan um that is accessible on the website and, and in Town Hall as of twenty eighteen. Um, and I believe what is being shared or discussed tonight, and I won't speak for them, is um some considerations from um the. Township's historical preservation commission. Ed, is there anything else I'm missing in terms of sort of characterizing where we are and what we're hearing tonight? From a planning perspective?
I can just add that under the master plan, there are a number of elements, as the planning board is aware. One of them is the historical preservation plan element. Um, the historical preservation commission uh has the responsibility to make recommendations to the board. For the historic preservation plan element. That is what they have done. Uh, there's a, I believe there's a resolution that was adopted by the, by the, a formal resolution adopted by the historic preservation commission, making this recommendation. It is now before the planning board, tonight's uh meeting, as the chair said, was to have the uh. Historic Preservation Commission professionals uh and perhaps others make a presentation to the board. Uh it's, this uh report has been distributed or this, this proposed plan element has been distributed. Uh I think it would be helpful for the board to listen obviously to the presentation, ask any questions that they may have. And the objective at the end of the day is how are you going to handle this? If, if the board is comfortable with the. Uh element as it has been prepared, uh then the next step, if the board desired, would be to set a public hearing. Uh and hold that public hearing and vote on the uh adoption of this historic preservation plan element. Uh if there are modifications that the board feels are appropriate or want to look into or have the historic preservation commission look into. Uh the board can certainly uh direct the, or request that the historic preservation commission do something. The board itself can form a committee or a subcommittee to review it. The board can review it as a whole. And when it's in a form uh that the board is comfortable with, uh then you can. Establish a hearing date for a public hearing on the, on the master plan and very similar, not very similar, exactly. What we did with regard to the housing element fair share plan recently uh earlier this year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thanks. A good overview. Um I know both um Janine and Barton have um joined us. I'm not sure uh who wanted to begin. Among the two of you.
Yep, I, I think it'll be me. So and then Janine can um can follow, I guess, so. Uh, all right. So good evening, everyone. Um is it okay if I share screen, I guess, and kind of walk you through?
You can. And are you going to introduce yourself as well?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, just so uh everyone knows, uh I've been the historic preservation consultant to Melbourne Township for approximately twelve years now. Um and I'm a licensed architect. Um I also work for many, many municipalities um across the state. County government, municipal government, um lots of land use boards, historic zoning planning. Um and I'm also. Um, an instructor uh with Rutgers University, where we teach a course every year, uh usually with Janine. Um about historic preservation and how it operates uh in the state of New Jersey. All right, so. All right, can everyone see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this will be like fifteen or twenty minutes. So bear with me. I'm just gonna kind of walk you through. Uh where the historic preservation commission um is at in this process. So uh this is an article that I was asked to write. Uh for the League of Municipalities magazine, uh a few years back, kind of defining, you know, how municipalities can use historic preservation to enhance the quality of their communities. And, you know, this, this process really stems from the nineteen seventy five um municipal land use law in the state, which first allowed. Uh historic preservation element to be implemented as part of a planning board's master plan. And. You know, the crux of this article is really that municipalities that have undertaken, you know, this planning process consistently have greater community awareness. Increased pride of place, lower crime rates, in enhanced neighborhood identity and broader investment dollars in heritage tourism. And, you know, the, these are actually, these are my photos, actually. This is a Kate May where I work. Uh this is Montclair. Where I knew Graham very well when we, when we worked there as well. So. Now I'm gonna go to where we're at in Melbourne Township. So this is actually your current. Historic preservation element of the master plan. So this is not a new um element per se. I mean, this one I, you know, is still in effect. It was adopted. February twenty seventh nineteen ninety one. So it's been over thirty years since we revised the historic preservation element of the master plan in Melbourne. This one is extremely short. Uh, you know, it's only six pages compared to what um, you know, we would want now, a much more robust document. But this is what we, we used. We tried not to invent the wheel here. We went through and used this um, this actual document. So these are, you know, the plan, the objectives as they were in nineteen ninety one. And we really, you know, we tried to use this as our basis when we started. We, we didn't um really invent the wheel. This explains the presently designated historic districts. Would have, would have been brand new at the time, nineteen eighty eight. Uh, the commission adopted the resolutions, making the Short Hills Park and the Wyoming. Uh historic districts in town. So they were only a couple of years old at this time. These are all the properties that were identified in February nineteen ninety one, predating nineteen hundred, not located in presently designated historic districts. Uh, you know, if you go to the historical society down at the train station, they have like folders on like all these properties. So a lot of them are in the downtown. And on Main Street, a lot are also on Old Short Hills Road and Parsonage Hill Road, that area. And then you get into some over on White Oak Ridge Road, you know, over near the um, the parcel properties in the cemetery as well. So these were all previously identified properties that were historic and predated nineteen hundred. So we obviously, you know, included all these that still stand as well as we updated it. And at the time, you can see here, at the time, the historical society was more, probably more involved than they are uh today. And they, they'd given a whole bunch of um kind of recommendations that were incorporated. The, the historical society actually sponsored the original. Survey of Melbourne Short Hills back in the late nineteen seventies. Um and so they, they recommended, you know, there's a lot of different streets here, which we actually tried to nail down what some of these properties were. And then they actually had a couple, actually four historic districts. Uh that they identified downtown and Main Street, south of the train tracks, Old Short Hills Road. Uh northeast Short Hills, near Parsons Hill Road, and then White Oak Ridge Road and Parsons Hill, west of Hartshorn Drive. So those were four like. Identified area of clusters of historic properties. Um and then this was just, you know, how does it relate to some of the other. Master plans in effect at the time. And then this is the, the map, the, the map that we still use today, this nineteen ninety one map. And if you can see, all these little dots in the two. So there's Wyoming, there's Short Hills. Obviously, they're still in effect today as locally designated historic districts. All these other dots are all those previously identified properties. So you see there's, you know, there's some clusters in the downtown and along some of the, you know, the main routes through town. And so, and then inside the historic districts, those would be like the contributing or, you know, could be individually designated properties themselves. And so that's it. That was the extent of nineteen ninety one. Um, so that's what, what we started with. And so we actually. You know, now we come up to, to what we've been working on. And we actually tried to get uh funding. We actually put in an application to the. State of New Jersey to um, to pay for this. Unfortunately, because of COVID, things got messed up and. They had uh four available slots and I think they had sixteen to twenty applicants at the time. So, and this is a slow process to go through the grant uh route anyway. And so it was decided that the township, uh since this is an important thing. It hadn't been updated in over thirty years, uh that we should just move ahead and try to, to update this and be able to present it. Uh to all of you um in this kind of a setting tonight. So. So just an overall, you know, historic preservation plan elements, identify municipal historic resources. Uh they also look at the standards that we use to assess their significance, promote historic preservation as a tool for economic development and community revitalization. And set forth goals and strategies for historic preservation in the municipality. So the plan, it really establishes preservation policy, which I'll show you, which in turn is reflected in other components and elements of the municipal master plan. Uh and the administration of its agencies, programs, and conduct of business. So that's kind of just the, the overall view. I think that'll be easier. We do like this. So the document is meant to be, since we're trying to be sustainable and green, it's meant to be uh printed on double sided. So. That makes it, you know, not seem as, as voluminous and also, you know, just try to save paper. So you'll see as we go along, that's how it's been laid out. Uh so, you know, I tried to acknowledge everybody who had a, a hand in this. Uh there was a HPE, which is historic preservation element. Working group with the asterisk. Those were just people that Mr. McDonald had on a list that we tried to, every time we had a draft, would send out. And just solicit comments if there were anything. And that included members of the historic preservation commission, uh the planning board. It also included uh some historical society members. And it also included uh Mr. Steinberg. Uh from the zoning board.
And Mr. Ross, I apologize for jumping in. Um I do see that my name is there and is asterisks. I, I did not participate uh in this. It's not, not for lack of, of interest. I, and I, 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 I'm not blaming anybody on this call. I just don't think either my email was not accurate. Or I was never circulated previous drafts. So I'm excited to be getting involved and understanding more now, but I did not participate unfortunately. Um in twenty twenty one when this happened.
Got you. So I take that up with Mr. McDonald, I guess.
Yeah, no, I just wanted that to be uh on the record, but thank you.
Okay, so we have um, you know, we have abbreviations. These are all these acronyms. I know they're, you know, if you're not used to them, these are all kind of hard to follow. So we have all these listed here. And then we go through the table of contents. Uh which we tried to lay out, just so, you know, anyone would be able to flip through this and quickly be able to find uh the applicable section that they'd be looking for. We also tried to keep appendices, you know, very minimal. Um, really, the only appendix was. Uh the list of current properties that were landmarked in the two historic districts in twenty eighteen. Um and actually, I thank Mr. McDonald, who. Uh actually put that together in twenty eighteen. So then we have an executive summary. This is really just a one to two page um summary of the document's purpose, contents, findings, recommendations. How it obviously applied to municipal land use law, uh how we looked at the previous uh master plan element. And this is just the second page of it. These are really the results. There's two new historic districts that were identified, one individual property, which was potentially eligible for local landmark designation. And that it's really in keeping with what they already come up with in nineteen ninety one. And then, you know, just increased funding, administrative procedures, management, management tools, um, you know, maintaining quantity, quality of local. Historic districts, balance between existing buildings and appropriate new development. That's, you know, in, in keeping with the context of the neighborhood. And obviously supporting public engagement and the stewardship of local historic resources. So those are all important things. That the uh historic preservation mission came up with. And we actually, you know, even in Zoom, you know, we, we tried to notice this. And we tried to have as much public involvement as possible. I think at least on three occasions, we opened it up to the public and. You know, numerous members of the historical society folks, um and some others who were interested uh did make comments which were very helpful. So. And then we go into, you know, the introduction. Uh so the element should not assume that the reader knows about historic preservation issues. You know, it's, it's kind of a niche. We understand that. So basic terms are explained. Uh values and benefits of historic preservation are stressed. And, you know, we, we give an overview of like, you know, why, you know, what are the eight benefits of municipal historic preservation programs? And so you kind of have them all there, so that people understand, um, you know, what a good thing preservation is and how it can help your community. There was a comprehensive Rutgers um economic impacts of historic preservation report that was done in nineteen ninety seven. And we summarize all of that here. It gives a lot of benefits, a lot of, you know, monetary and financial benefits, tax credits, grants, other things that you can get. Sprinkled throughout, just so you can see, we, we did a lot of the um. Earlier historic photos, just because it shows a lot of the buildings in their original um. You know, kind of setting and, and how Melbourne Short Hills kind of looked back in, you know, at least a hundred years ago or earlier. And also a lot of the buildings, which are unfortunately, you know, lost now, just to kind of give everyone a sense of, of how the, the town evolved and what it used to look like. Uh the history section provides a broader understanding of the value of surviving cultural resources within our community. It summarizes the local history, historical themes, development patterns, architectural patterns. This is one of the very first houses, the Harshorn House number one, uh one thirty seven Hobart Avenue, which was built circa eighteen eighty. And uh it still stands. It doesn't look like that, but it's still there. Um. And, you know, that's kind of what this plan is too. You know, a lot of houses kind of evolved and changed over time. So this is really just an inventory of all the different historic properties. We have throughout the town. And, you know, it's really interesting when you look at these old historic photos from eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties, nineteen hundreds. How little trees there actually were. You know, they cut all the trees down and then they basically replanted them. So it's always, people are always shocked when they see those type of, of images. Uh we go through, you know, what's, what's in the town here, kind of whole history. You know, where are the different neighborhoods? What are the civic places and historic places in Melbourne? And we, we give a little paragraph about each one. You know, a lot of the historical society had already done some of this work. The old Melbourne Hotel at the corner of Melbourne Avenue, Main Street, that actually. Is still there, buried deep inside the building. Uh these are just more of the neighborhoods that we try to identify. Um, I appreciate Graham. He, he actually went over this all and gave a lot of. Uh good uh revisions that we incorporate into the final draft. And then we go into preservation efforts, um you know, actually in the township. Uh and this summer rises and quantify municipal historic preservation elements to date, you know, what's happened. Uh all the efforts over time, local historic districts, easements, national register properties. Um, you know, what historic. You know, what historic resources still remain, what are at risk, and, you know, how the municipality can better protect all these different resources. And like I said, in the late seventies, this was the very first architectural. Historic Resources Survey was done by David Gibson Associates. Um, it cost. Over thirty thousand dollars back in the late seventies, and the Historical Society footed a lot of the bill with with grant funding. And we also in uh two thousand eight had an updated uh inventory. This was a lot of the properties that we saw with the dots outside of the historic district. So the ones on Old Short Hills Road. Uh, White Oak Ridge Road, Parsonage Hill Road, a lot of those were identified in that report in two thousand and eight. And then these are our current local historic districts, the two of them, and we have three local historic landmarks. So these are the five uh things that are kind of protected, the resources in town at the moment. And we discuss the actual uh commission. So there's the commission conducting business, obviously before. Before COVID derailed everything. Um. And this section really describes, you know, is there an ordinance and commission? How do they operate? You know? How do they? How does the commission determine what properties are restored? What evaluation criteria the commission uses to make sure they they, you know? Uh, give impartial, defensible decisions. Uh, the National Register Criteria for Evaluation Eligibility for Listing, you know, how you actually list properties, you know, there's. Local listing, there's state of New Jersey listing, and then there's National Register of Historic Places listing. So like. You know, Short Hills, Short Hills is all three. So Short Hills is one of the most protected neighborhoods uh really in the United States, because it has all those levels of protection uh which is important. And then, you know, this is our two thousand eighteen letter from the Department of the Interior where Milburn became. A certified local government, and this is a national recognition. And in New Jersey, there's five hundred and sixty five municipalities, so Milburn's one of only forty six at the moment. Out of all those municipalities that are, you know, kind of the leaders in the state. That are recognized as certified local government. Um, and with that, you get grants, you get some additional assistance and training with the um. Historic Preservation Office in Trenton, so it's it's a really good thing. And then recent HPC accomplishments, we go through all the things, you know, in twenty twenty, Milburn was recognized as the best Historic Preservation Commission in the state of New Jersey. And a lot of other things that we've, you know, been working on over the years. Um. You know, things were updating, commission members attending um the historic preservation conference, uh scanning the Gibson and OCRing the entire Gibson report. That was a big task. Uh, just so we can provide that to applicants when they come in front of the commission. Uh, section one oh six review processes. Um. You know, there's a lot of different things we've done. We've applied for a lot of different grants uh that we've been able to work with the township to to gather. DOT Grants, New Jersey Historic Trust, Starters of the American Revolution, uh Essex County Open Space Trust Fund. That we were able to help uh get a grant for Parcel House, for instance. So. Those are some of the 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 things outside of the meetings that the HPC has been working on. We had an awards program. Uh, where we'd actually give out awards, so that was always well received. And then this is just criteria for designation, how the Secretary of Interior standards apply. Uh, you know, when they, when the HPC actually gives um decisions, they're supposed to be citing this. That's what's in the ordinance. These are the ten standards for rehabilitation. Rehabilitation is the most common way that properties are uh saved in the United States, and so that's why that's important that you cite that. And then we go into the uh kind of the public policy review and. This is just the other municipal planning documents that are out there, summarize their discussion. Um. Existing municipal regulations that impact historic preservation. Uh, you know, what are all the other things out there? Subdivision regulations, maintenance, demolition delays, local historic districts. Signage regulations. So we we just wanted to look at all that stuff and also all of these different things that may impact on historic preservation. So obviously, the layperson. Doesn't know what all these things are. So there's the National Historic Preservation Act. Archaeological Act, um, that's nationally done. There's Department of Interior, who administers the National Park Service, who administers the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, you know, there's Crossroads of the American Revolution. Scenic Byways Programs, National Trust, uh, you know, New Jersey HBO. Uh, New Jersey Historic Trust, who actually gives out a lot of the grant money in New Jersey, uh, which is very important uh when people ask. New Jersey Historical Commission, they also give out grants uh which are very helpful to a lot of nonprofits around the state. Uh, we use this all the time when we review projects. There's the New Jersey Rehab Subcode, which basically exempts you from a lot of uh. International Building Code requirements. So it's always important that you, when you're doing a historic project, that you know there's some things you don't have to do. For instance, you don't have to. Put an elevator in a historic building often. You don't have to um. You know, raise the building heights if you're only repairing in kind. Uh, you know, there's a lot of different things like that. We have, you know, DOT, DOT actually has funding to preservation. New Jersey doesn't have monetary funding, but they help out a lot. Um, and then, you know, there's League of Historical Societies, New Jersey Historical Society, and actually Sustainable Jersey. Um. We got asked a lot of this about who we're working on this. So be if with our historic preservation element of the master plan, we actually get ten points. Um. Through Sustainable Jersey for adopting this. So we've we've had a bunch of people ask about that, and actually, everything in this report exactly follows what they want. So. They have a template for how you're supposed to do this report, and we actually followed that template in this update. So we should be eligible to get the ten green points. MLUL, uh, then we go to Milburn um planning policies, and, you know, we go to the twenty eighteen uh master plan reexamination. That Chair Zall was just referring to. And if you go to goal five, you know, it says it right there, encourage the preservation and restoration of structures, historic and architectural significance, encourage. Milburn Township Historic Preservation Commission to conduct reviews in neighborhoods and structures to determine if there are additional areas and sites which deserve protection under the ordinance. And make corresponding recommendations to the TC. Increase public awareness of the benefits of preservation, historic preservation zoning, then enrich the quality of life and support the HPC. In its pursuit of safeguarding the heritage of the township by preserving Milburn's cultural, historical, social, archaeological, and architectural resources and sites. So. That's what we're here tonight trying to do. Um, and then we also touch on the land use element, the circulation element, and and again with the um. Green Building and Environmental Sustainability Plan. So then we go into our like inventory of historic properties, like what do we have? Um. You know, in the township that's worthy of preservation. So we talk about. Short Hills Park, uh Wyoming Historic District. Uh, these two images are really neat. Back when, you know, during the depression in the early nineteen thirties, everyone was out of work, including architects. And so the WPA, uh, you know, had a great program under the 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 New Deal at the time to. Put out of work architects to work by going around the country and measuring and drawing uh nationally significant properties. And so they went all over the United States and. In Milburn, there were two properties that were uh, you know, that they stopped at and actually measured in photographs. So it's the the Hessian House, the Parcel House, uh, both of which. Are now locally designated and protected. So that those are the only two houses in town that they decided uh were important to to measure and document. And then we have all these other historic resources, and we already looked at the nineteen ninety one master plan, and this is just basically updating. So these are the same properties. And, you know, some are lost, some are changed, some have different addresses, surprisingly. And this is just an uh, you know, updating all that. So that's all there. There's the map that we already looked at. These were the districts that were looked at at the time. These are the properties from that two thousand eight report. They're all just listed here. And then we have a whole bunch of properties that uh did not meet the criteria. So these are properties that. No longer would really be qualified as historic. There are ones that have been demolished since nineteen eighty, so those these nine have been demolished even since nineteen eighty. And then there were some that, you know, I I just think the address is wrong. Farrell Mills Catch also said that they couldn't find these properties. So we don't know what those are. So obviously, those have. Nothing to do with the inventory anymore. Um, and then in twenty twenty, uh, we got a grant through the state of New Jersey. So this was, you know. Zero taxpayer dollars uh to update Short Hills Park uh Historic District Survey, which had not been done for those two hundred and sixty eight properties um in almost forty years. And uh we we basically went through the entire district and identified eighty two properties to be amended from non-contributing to be contributing, mostly because they're now fifty years old. So they're kind of historic in their own right. And so thi- this just kind of shows you that. These are the existing properties that have been there since the seventies, the way they're designated, and now, as you see in purple, there's just. More basically contributing properties. It really doesn't matter for the review. It's just, it's just really to get in line with state um review processes, also to help the commission. Uh, when they, when they have applicants um as to what their property is really valued and and should be, you know, looked at. And then in the Wyoming District, we did the same thing. So then we have this, you know, what's the National Register of Historic Places? What's the New Jersey Register of Historic Places? These are the only properties in Milburn that are listed there. We have Greenwood Gardens, which is a state register property, and then we have Wyoming, which is a state register property, and we have Short Hills Park, which is a national register property. And then we have these other ones over here on the right that you can see. That are eligible for listing in the state national register. So this has nothing to do with us in Milburn. This is what the state of New Jersey thinks. And some of these bridges are just because the bridge had to have construction and somebody had to do a report. That's really it. Uh, then we go through the other ones that are identified as possibly being historic for local designation. So we have Short Hills Village Historic District. And, you know, this is, these reports have already been done in the past, so we know which properties would be contributing, key contributing, non-contributing. There's their block and lots and everything. Same with uh downtown Milburn Historic District. These are all the properties and also Paper Mill Playhouse, and we've we've talked with them as well, and these are their, basically the Paper Mill Playhouse and then the surrounding. Uh, you know, housing, worker housing, even the riverbank, a couple of parking lots, but that's kind of, um, you know, obviously, everyone knows the. Paper Mill Playhouse is a very significant part of uh the fabric of the township. And this map over here really shows what what that is. So there's the the two in pink that are already locally designated. And then you have the ones in orange that would be, I guess, proposed or eligible uh for listing. And that's really it. Um, state national registry, you have South Mountain, which is the the major district here. And then this just explains, you know, what what that criteria is. Here's an interesting photo of green, the original Greenwood Gardens, Pleasant Days before it burned down in nineteen eleven. And then this is really interesting. The Historical Society has all these walking tours that they've had printed out for for years. And so we actually scanned all these things. All these walking tours. So you have the the downtown Old Old Short Hills Road uh and the other districts. And then we actually just, you know, basically put pen to paper. What what are all those block lots, addresses? What what would they actually look like? Uh, just because they've all been identified. So that's all of these properties. Uh, this is really neat. This is the old um. Short Hills Club before it burned down. It burned down in nineteen seventy eight, right right across from the train station. So. Apparently designed by Stanford White, McKinney and White. So. All right. And then we have uh measuring policy effectiveness. So, you know, what's going right? Uh, what's going wrong, threats, uh, what's current projected uh demographic and market forces at work in the community? Um, you know, are housing expectations changing? Are tear downs an issue in the community? Is demolition by neglect an issue? Luckily, not so much in Milburn. Um, you know, private sector threats, uh, public sector threats, uh. You know, abandonment, deferred maintenance, change of uses, uh alterations, additions, all the different things. And these are just, you know, all the, you know, what are some successes that we've done? These are all the good things. On the next page are all the challenges. So. You know, these are all potential obstacles uh to kind of implementing historic preservation uh in the township. Most of them are, you know, pretty, pretty standard or typical. Um, and then we have historic preservation goals, and, you know, this is. You know, what do we want in the community? How do residents feel about the town's historic resources? You know, do we appreciate the existing resources? Do we understand what could happen to resources under current zoning? Is there proposed zoning at work? Um, you know, what are the community values that inform the development of the municipal uh historic preservation goals and objectives? So that's, you know, this is explaining what I already mentioned, public engagement, and then our historic preservation goals that we came up with. This is a sketch I actually did with Tim Gordon back in twenty thirteen, where we identified, you know, what we've been talking about, you know, all the different historic districts on the main spine roads. And we have the two existing ones and and the downtown. And then recommendations, you know, these are. Basically, we wanted to have like an action plan as well and and kind of streamline, you know, what private, public sector historic preservation strategies. Should be put in this uh implementation agenda, and we want to outline a realistic year by year schedule for trying to implement this stuff, which you'll see on the next page. Including the name of uh which board or town uh administrative uh entity would be responsible for implementation. And how that could be, you know, with ongoing and long term goals. And, you know, we want this to be, you know, as easy as possible to try to understand. And, you know, these were all pretty, pretty good. Some came from previous, uh, other people. Kind of identified some of the different um recommendations that would go in here, you know, obviously. Planning board members have have anything else. I I don't think that that, you know, will be too much of an issue. Um, but these have been vetted and and gone back and forth, um, what there should be. And then, you know, here's what I was saying about, you know, what's a priority? What's a realistic timeframe to implement these things? And, you know, who's really responsible? The planning board, the TC, the HPC uh for doing some of these things. And so you see first is increase HPC funding procedures, management tools. Next would be maintain the quantity and quality of locally designated historic districts. And then improve the protection of Milburn's historic resources, promote compatible new development around those resources. And improve public engagement in the stewardship of historic resources. You know, we don't want HPC out on an island. You know, we're all part of the fabric of the the town and the community. So. And then we have an appendix. These are all just helpful links and and really the only real appendix was, um, you know, as I mentioned earlier, just Mr. McDonald's um. Helpful compiled list once and for all of the Wyoming and Short Hills um. Actual locally designated historic properties and um. There, everyone would be surprised, they're actually different between local, state, and national. They're slightly different on the the edges of the historic district. And that was one of the big things we learned when we recently did the um. Short Hills Park Historic District uh resurvey that hadn't been done in many years. We tried to clean that up. Um. So, you know, I guess I'll just leave you with this comment, you know, the historic preservation planning helps promote a sense of local pride and stewardship for future generations. And it's a tool that definitely should be used to substantially contribute to the continued quality of life uh and economic vitality in Milburn Township. And. With that, I'll I'll turn it back to the Chair Zall, and I know, um, you know, I think Ms. Bauer uh would probably want to add a few things as well. So thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I guess you just alluded to um. Ms. Bauer, I don't know if you wanted to have an opportunity to introduce yourself and speak or. I'm I don't, I don't want to jump. Over you.
So I think that would be a good idea, and I thank you, uh, Chair. My name is Janine Bauer. I'm with the firm.
I apologize for interrupting. Um, Mr. Ross, would I, would I, would you mind unsharing so we can see uh? Fully. Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Commissioners, Chair, and Attorney Bouzak. Uh, my name is Janine Bauer. I'm with the firm in Lawrenceville, New Jersey, Shaferman Lake, and and among other things that I do, I specialize in historic preservation law. And I've done that. Um, actually, my whole career, which is since nineteen eighty five now. Um, and I do represent historic preservation commissions. And I've also represented planning boards and other land use boards in uh New Jersey. I'm licensed in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Florida, and I do practice in. All of the states, although primarily my practice is in New Jersey. Um. So the only thing that I really wanted to add, since I'm the lawyer, I'm not going to address uh the substance of any uh historic preservation, but. In terms of the law and the procedure, I'm sure uh the the uh planning board members may have questions about that. So I thought that proactively. I would, um. Uh, and actually, I thought of this suggestion after the Historic Preservation Commission went through. Uh, this draft of the Historic Preservation Element, which uh we endorsed and and urged the planning board to adopt. Uh, but I think we should actually add to the appendix items, the ordinance, the historic preservation ordinance, so that it's easily. Referenced and and perhaps even uh do sort of a quick overview of it, uh, which would be easy for us to write. Uh, but the bottom line is the the procedure for local designation, and there's a big difference between identification of historic resources and designation of them as a local landmark. Big difference between identification of historic resources and designation of them as a local landmark. After which they would be protected by uh local ordinance and. Be required to come through the Historic Preservation uh Commission. Uh right now, as uh Mr. Ross indicated, uh there's only Greenwood Gardens that's proposed. And the Hessian House and Parcel House. Uh so if you're outside of the district. Uh or one of the two districts, Wyoming or Short Hills Park. Um you're not designated and the designation takes place only by the Township Committee. And it can happen one of two ways. The Township Committee, of course, is always empowered to do. Uh what it wants to do, so we could undertake an ordinance to designate a property as a local landmark. Um whenever it wanted to, if it follows certain procedures. But in the ordinance itself, generally it's anticipated that the report for a nomination of. A uh designated local landmark and that could be any kind of structure. Uh residential, commercial, industrial, literally anything, the railroad. Um uh would come from a nomination report that's probably authored by the Historic Preservation Commission. Although it can also be authored by the Planning Board itself. Once there's a nomination report, it's referred to the Township Committee for its. Um its consideration and like all ordinances that are zoning ordinances, because the Historic Preservation Ordinance is nothing but a zoning ordinance. Uh and part of the zoning article of, of Milburn Township, just like all other uh townships and cities. Uh the Township Committee will consider it and then refer to the Planning Board. Uh just like all zoning ordinances are referred to the Planning Board and then the Planning Board will take it up. And decide what it wants to say about that. Um if it includes it in its master plan, then the Township Committee, it goes back to the Township Committee, like all ordinances. And then the Township Committee can do what it wants, select certain um structures uh. You know, delete certain, adopted in, in whole, rejected, you know, decline to do anything. Uh that, that's just like any governing body, it can do what it wants to do, uh of course with a majority vote. Um so if it adopts an ordinance designated. Designating anything from an entire district to a single property as a local landmark. Uh then that goes into the master plan and that goes into the township record, so that when people go down to. The building department and, you know, try to get a permit, you know, it's pointed out to them, well, you know, this property is historic. And there are several places in the ordinance um that's already adopted. I think it was most recently amended in twenty nineteen. But I, I don't quote me on that. Um. Might have been twenty sixteen, that, that where the owner of the property is not only invited to comment, but noticed. Uh that these various steps are taking place and I've actually only described three of the, the steps, the nomination report. Uh the referral to the Township Committee, the Township Committee's referral back to the Planning Board and the Planning Board. Of course holds hearings and so forth and refers it back with their recommendation or, or nod. Uh to the Township Committee, uh but there's even more steps and they're all very specifically and clearly laid out in the historic preservation. Uh ordinance. Um so the bottom line is, well, this is a very um, a very uh well-researched. Uh uh draft uh plan for you to consider as, including as the historic preservation element in the master plan. This plan does not, nor could the Historic Preservation Commission in any uh way uh. Designate a local landmark. That's the, for the Township Committee to do. Um but this um, this is sort of a first step because it's essentially like a survey and provides. It provides all the underlying research and makes recommendations to say, well, you know, you should consider. Um the Paper Mill Playhouse District or, or you know, whatever it's, it's part and went through, you know, in a summary fashion, what it, what it uh. Identifies, uh so that's, that's why I'm trying to draw that distinction between the identification of your. A very valuable historic resources and the designation process, which is a legal process that's under the purview of the Township Committee. After reports are researched and made. So that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Great, okay. Thank you for sharing that. Um. So, and just to sort of give a, a little bit of an intro of um how I'd like tonight to proceed. Um because this was a presentation to the Planning Board and because um this is not um. We would not be voting on. Um what was presented, we would vote on taking an action. I think this is what Ed said before, I'm just gonna sort of try to repeat it for everybody's benefit now that we've heard. That presentation and the material shared. Um this is an opportunity for us to um. Raise any questions or concerns or, you know, voice support or. Um you know, sort of our reactions, I think this is the first time, we've obviously been shared the documents and they've been made available uh on the, the town website. But this is our first um opportunity to discuss this as a board together. Um and then. Uh and like I mentioned, because you know, this wasn't a noticed meeting in terms of no. Uh Janine, as you just alluded to, uh making property owners um. Sort of shared a, an official letter from the township or from on any action to be taken. Um we would not be. I, I'm hesitant to say we won't take any action because we may choose to do, to do something to advance this process, but we won't be approving or. Adopting any, anything to our master plan tonight. So Ed, is there anything else I should sort of say or preface uh as we have, as we lead into an open discussion?
I think you've stated everything, Madam Chair, thank you.
Well, um so that said. Uh are there any comments, reactions, questions, uh especially for Mr. Ross or for um Ms. Bauer as well?
Mr. Ross, I, I have a question. Uh. You know, obviously you've laid out a lot of the benefits of expanding the, the historical plan as part of the master plan. Are there any potential downsides or, or pitfalls that, that we should be considering as well?
So as, as Ms. Bauer uh alluded to, oftentimes, you know, a lot of the pushback is more from um. You know, private residents, you know, single-family residences, uh people, you know, their home is their castle and they don't want to um have any. Increased uh regulation on their property or um. You know, extra time that they'd have to try to pull a permit or something. So we've actually tried to stay away from that and what we've. Really proposed uh with a lot of thought is more. Targeted historic districts that have already been identified over the, the many decades. Um so that'd be the downtown district and, you know. The Paper Mill Playhouse uh District and um. Old Short Hills Village uh District, you know, these are more commercial areas. Um and also that have um. You know, they're, they're within proximity to other historical resources and we try to stay away from. People's private residences, obviously, you know, there's private residences in Short Hills and Wyoming districts. Um but the only individual landmark that we proposed um. You know, we identify, there's a lot, obviously, there's hundreds and hundreds, but um the only one that we thought. Would be appropriate at this time to kind of push was um Greenwood Gardens, since it's already on the state of New Jersey. Uh Register of Historic Places and they're a nonprofit, so you know, them being designated, um you know, is, it's actually. Really only positive benefit to, you know, work with the commission and also possibly um help with uh grant funding that they would be eligible for. You know, private residents uh are not eligible for grant funding, even if you live in a historic house. Um. So there's, New Jersey has tried to do um tax credits uh to their. To their benefit, but they're all for non-residential properties and there's federal tax credits you can get to, again, non-residential properties. Has to be income-producing properties, which would mean the historic districts that we've already proposed, which are by and large um. Commercially owned, you know, retail spaces and in the, in the, you know, small downtowns and little more. Uh urban suburban areas of Milburn and Short Hills, so. That was really the approach we took, you know, we were actually very cognizant um of people's um of rights and we tried to respect that with this whole process.
Okay, thank you.
Um Mr. Ross, I have, I have a couple of questions, um but I'll just start with one um. Piggybacking off this last topic, which is on kind of where you picked and how you went about selecting. I appreciate that you sort of walked us through, you know, the, the work that had been done in prior years. You had mentioned it a couple of times and it's in the report, you know, the, sort of this list of four. And it seems that where, you know, the, the four different sites, including some of the north, White Oak Ridge and Parsonage, you know, and as well as the. The, you know, south of the tracks and whatnot. Um. Is there a reason why it just seems like a couple of those emerged uh in, in like the, the recommendations in those orange highlighted areas? Um and if you could. Talk through that.
Yeah, so um and, and this wasn't me, you know, obviously I worked with the commission, this was. At least a year and a half uh process, eighteen month process going through this all. Um and a lot of input from. You know, other people who showed up to HPC meetings, um including Historical Society members who, who um had a lot of. Voice concerns and, and things uh that they, that they thought would be good. Uh things to add into the plan and really, you know, if you look back to the nineteen ninety-one. Plan, those four areas besides the downtown district, the other three areas were all really residential areas. And so I actually think that we took. A, you know, a more, you know, innocuous tone trying to um. Focus on downtown areas that have already been surveyed, you know, in the past ten years by the commission. Um you know, we've already. We've already actually done a lot of work on downtown Milburn, downtown Short Hills. And um the Paper Mill Playhouse, uh just because of various other projects and things over the years that we've been working on. And you know, that information uh through the Historical Society was also much more readily available than people's individual homes, so. Um and then Greenwood Gardens is a nonprofit, so they also have a lot of historical information that they um were able to provide. Um. And you know, they even applied to our awards program this year, so. So the, you know, we tried to focus on those and we actually did not do the three other real historic districts. I mean, you know, all those properties are listed in this historic preservation element, but um. They aren't proposed immediately to be locally designated by any stretch, so.
Okay. Thanks. Um yeah, and I mean, you, you know, you, you have mentioned it and I, I appreciate the acknowledgement that, you know. Public outreach and input um is an important part of the process, you know, at, at, I guess, the HPC meetings. Um. I think from a, uh from a perspective of, you know. Advocating on behalf of the public as, as the, from the planning perspective and the planning board. A lot of what we did with our master plan reexamination was making sure we kind of sought out. Public input and feedback and I did see that, you know, you had noted there were two public meetings kind of on this proposed plan. About a year ago now, right at last October, November. Um. But again, I um, I, I guess I'm of a, a personal opinion that I think um would have loved to sort of understand. All of the, the public input that was uh, you know, sought and um, and if outreach was done among the communities that are. Um going to be recommended, because I think that's, it's. Important for, you know, like you're sharing with us today and we're sort of, we're looking through it and understanding it. Um and I'm not, this is not a criticism of you, just of, of. The process and just wanting to make sure um all folks who are, you know, potentially impacted, benefited, you know. Uh are, are made fully aware of, of what we're doing and I think that's, you know, it's helpful that you're couching and explaining um the Greenwood Gardens. As sort of like an identified as a most appropriate. Um. And I, and I think, you know, there is absolutely, you know, a need, a benefit of historical preservation. I just want to make sure we. Um as the planning board are going to feel comfortable if we're going to be owning, you know, such a document and adopting. Um. I just wanted to ask one other question and then I, I apologize for taking so much airtime. Um you mentioned in the sustainable jersey and the ten points for having, you know, an HPE element, we do have an element, so. Um like, and you mentioned, not, not that many communities in New Jersey do, do we, do we get some sort of credit or acknowledgement? You know, for, for being, you know, inclusive of, of historic preservation as is.
So um we would have to adopt something like I chose you tonight um that follows their. Uh how they lay it out, so they, they have their specific sections and, you know, our previous one at six pages doesn't follow anything that they accept, unfortunately.
Got it, okay.
And, and to answer your previous question real quick, um. When we, when we've been surveying, you know, in the previous years, obviously, you know, you're out there with a clipboard, people come out to talk to you. So we always take that opportunity to, yeah, you have a historic building and this is what we're doing and this is what we're trying to do in town. Um and as far as the, the public comment, like a meeting, I mean, yeah, we, we would have liked to have had um not everything on. On Zoom, especially when it comes to this type of, you know, public workshop or comment. Um and unfortunately with COVID, it was just bad timing, so.
I appreciate that. Anybody else have comments or? Questions? Yes, Tom.
Yep, I'm, I'm just a quick question on the sustainability. Are there any plans um to also try to preserve the interior structure of the houses? And perhaps like try to reuse all the materials? I know San Antonio is going through a similar ordinance process at the moment. Um but just wondering if we should put that in to ours now and uh instead of twenty years later when uh. Half of our houses have been uh deconstructed from the inside.
So um, so two parts to this, this answer. Um. So in the United States, interiors are very rarely uh designated unless they're, you know, a very special space. Uh that, that warrants that on their own. So unless you're doing a tax credit project, uh which again, you, you have to. Would have to be a commercial income-producing property to go through the twenty percent. Federal rehabilitation tax credit process and New Jersey's now, you know, they're finally one of the states. Uh. New Jersey was one of only fourteen states in the entire United States who didn't have a state historic tax credit, but we do now, but. Eventually, hopefully, it'll be open to, you know, people like all of us on this call, but uh currently it's for five million plus. So very large developments. So only the tax credit process are you ever going to have someone like at the state of New Jersey or the National Park Service um. Reviewing what you're trying to change and what materials you're trying to salvage or reuse on the inside. Um in Milburn Township, we only regulate exterior and it's like that for every local historic preservation commission, really in the US. It's only exterior, exterior only, you can do whatever you want on the interior, that's even if you're designated. And it's really the same for the state and national register as well. It's, everything's really concerned with um. View sheds, streetscapes, exterior improvements and, you know, that's what defines kind of a historic district when you have a lot of um. You know, different exterior views that kind of make it a historic place. So interior, you know, if you want to gut your bathroom or your kitchen. Um that really has no historic regulation uh to it and um. And then on the sustainability part, um there's very few places that have really moved in historic sustainability guidelines. Um but we recently uh did one in Plainfield, we actually just wrote one and um. And I think you're right, that it, it's definitely moving that way and I think. You know, somebody just sent me an article yesterday about how um historic buildings are basically being deconstructed just for all their um. You know, embodied carbon in the materials and trying to reuse those or at least give them away, so that is a burgeoning uh industry, yes, so.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? From board members? Mr. Bear?
I'll go ahead. Um. Just a couple of things. Um, Mr. Ross. Uh maybe you could give us a little, I'm, I'm following the line of conversation from our chair. If you can give us a little bit of information on the meetings and how they were noticed. Um. You said that you did have some public meetings and on this uh element and can you? Can you tell us what was in specifically in the notice of these public meetings? How far did they define the actions that were going to be taken as part of this element?
So I definitely could not, um I, you'd have to talk to the HPC Secretary. Um and even Ms. Bauer wasn't the attorney at the time, so.
I recognize that, thank you. Um typically the notices go out, they're not very specific, a lot of times they're not very specific, therefore. Um they may not have identified these two specific. Districts that are identified in the element. As part of the hearing, so therefore property owners within those districts. Probably weren't aware of the fact that there was going to be some discussion about these particular districts. So um that I find to be potentially a problem. Um I am. As with the chair, very uh supportive of robust. public engagement when it comes to the fact that will be affecting people's properties, residential and non-residential. And you talk about the fact that you're trying to stay away from residential properties. But doesn't the downtown, excuse me, the Short Hills Village Historic District that's identified in the element contain residential uses?
I believe that it contains a couple.
Okay, so it, so there are residential uses, irrespective of what was said earlier, there are residential uses that are part of these.
Of course, yeah, I mean, they're, they're downtown districts, so they're at least mixed use. You know, I'm sure there's people who live in the, the upper stories and there's some residential as well. You know, as part, you know, as part of the master plan, we weren't locally designating these properties. So we didn't have to specifically notice any of those property owners.
Okay, but that's a little bit different than what you said before, because what you said before was the fact that you were trying to stay away from residential districts and, but these do contain residential uses. The other thing I noticed in the element is that you were using a twenty-five-year-old, reference for, um, does the denoting benefits, monetary benefits. That was a nineteen, as you said, a nineteen ninety-seven reference. That was, uh, used for, isn't there, wouldn't there potentially be a better reference or newer reference that would identify the benefits of designating properties historic?
Yes, I mean, there, there are many studies that are done all the time. There's one gentleman, Donovan Ripkema, who does this all over the United States. So yes, they're much more up-to-date numbers and things, um, that could be used. We were just trying to use the specific New Jersey Rutgers example, which you're right, it's been, it's been a while since they've updated.
So maybe, maybe that could be done. I, I would suggest that maybe that would be updated and, uh, you know, newer references, uh, more up-to-date references are used. The one thing I see that is void, uh, for silent on is the increase in costs of repairs and maintenance. Once a property is either designated or is, or is located within a district. It is absolutely silent on that. And I did some research as well, and obviously from my forty years of planning, I've had situations where we've had to dress, uh, historic buildings. And not, I saw references that indicated that property owners would be subject to, uh, upwards of twenty to forty percent increases in the cost of maintaining and upgrading their buildings over a non-designated building, either a specific historic building or building within a historic district. So I think that it's appropriate that we talk about the both sides of, of the, the whole question of designation, not only the benefits, but also the, um, the impacts of designating a building. And I think that's important to be discussed in, um, the element as well. And the other, the other question I asked, again, I think that, uh, Beth asked as well is that I'm not clear on the process of designating these two districts, uh, or recommending the designation of these, she's recommending the designation of these two districts. Uh, it seems to me that, um, there was a group that was identified that designated these districts. And, um, I would like to see a little bit more of a process and understand how these districts were selected from a group of districts, um, and those, how those decisions were made. The last thing, and I, I see the mayor has her hand up, is that only within the last couple of years, the township went through a process of, changing the zoning in the downtown to allow for the increase in height, you know, specifically to add either commercial or residential uses into the downtown to create more vitality and economic development. This is recommending, um, the designation of a historic district in the downtown, which could potentially make it more difficult and costly for a property owner to do exactly what we suggested they would do as part of the new zoning. So again, I would like to, I would like to see before this element would, uh, be moved forward, more discussion about the balance between the zoning ordinance that was passed that would allow for this additional story of buildings in downtown and the designation of the downtown as a historic district, which based on some of the research that I have done, would make it more costly for a property to do exactly what we told them they could do as part of the rezoning. So, um, you know, tonight I, I would have problems suggesting that this, uh, element, uh, advanced in its present state. I would suggest that more discussion is required before that happens, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Mayor Miggins, we turn to you.
Thank you so much. Dan, I would love it if you'd share all your research with us. I think that's so important that you have so much research and so much knowledge. Be great if you hear that with the whole, uh, planning board. You know, one of the things I think-
Happy to, Maggie, absolutely.
That'd be great, if you could do that, maybe get it to Eileen and she could share it with all of us. It seems like, Beth, that there seems to be so many, I mean, there's so much to unpack in all this. I want to go back to, um, what Mr. Boozak said in the beginning of the meeting, that maybe it would make sense if we could do some kind of a subcommittee to unpack all of this for us. I think that might be the way to go, that we can have other people study this for us, because there's just so much to unpack here. So I don't know, um, I, I kind of like that idea, Mr. Boozak. I think that's a great idea, if we could get somehow a subcommittee within this planning board to unpack this all for us and make suggestions.
That was actually the chair's, the chair's idea. I stole it from her.
All right, well, well, that's why, that's why she's the chair.
It's a, it's a great planning tool. We have, we have implemented, you know, subcommittees. Um, and again, that's just because anytime we want to have any discussion, just like planning board members can't just speak with one another about planning board needs, it would have to be via a subcommittee. And we'd have to be mindful of how many people can participate. But I agree, I think that could be a great way to sort of create our own interface between our board and the HPC, which has done significant amount of work, you know, over many years, especially the last few years. And I think we want to be able to build off of it, appreciate what they've done. And then if we have additional questions or like Ed had mentioned, if there are additional requests or changes, we might want to impose or dig into, this would, this would be an opportunity for us to do that.
One hundred percent, thank you so much.
Well, thanks, Diane.
Um, I want to make sure, am I unmuted?
Yeah, we hear you.
Yeah, um, you said before that you weren't sure how the public process went through with HPC. Well, we have Ms. Canfield who's the HPC chair and Ms. Miggins, who is the liaison. So they would have been at those meetings, they could easily explain that, that's one. Um, the other thing is, I think any more discussions have to include the public at this point. You know, like if there's people watching, they can't speak to this. And the other thing is Barton, you said, um, nothing's being proposed immediately that would affect all the other residential houses in Wyoming or wherever. So when is the intent to put that onto adding these?
Yeah, good question. I think that'd be a question for the HPC, uh, who would actually have to nominate these properties. And then assuming that they're consistent with the master plan, um, that the planning board members would, um, get a chance to look at it. And then, you know, as Ms. Bauer said, you know, it's ultimately with the township committee, um, who decides what, uh, properties would actually be locally designated.
And how would those residents be notified? Would they be asked to, um, speak before the HPC? Would they be asked to speak at the township committee? Would they be asked to speak at the planning board? Who would move this forward?
Yes, all of the above. To Mr. Bear's point, uh, that's when they would be, uh, certified mail notice for the HPC meeting and they would be allowed to, uh, talk then. And then they'd also be allowed to, uh, attend the township committee meeting. And I guess they'd have first reading and, and final, so they'd have a couple opportunities at that meetings, those meetings as well to, to, you know, voice their, you know, happiness or displeasure, whichever way it was, so.
Would they be-
As well as the planning board.
Yeah, would they be required to then hire an attorney, which would be at some cost to themselves to defend if they don't want their houses included in this? And that goes for the commercial properties as well. Would these people now be under the obligation to retain attorneys to protect their current status to not be designated?
I'll defer to Ms. Bauer on that question.
Well, I, I mean, anybody can hire an attorney for anything and most people do. But, um, there, this is not a nomination report. I, I just want to respond to Mr. Bear's, uh, comment because the kind of public hearing that goes into a nomination report, uh, that hasn't taken place. So the only public hearings, uh, that have occurred are the, are the typical, public is invited to attend, just like this meeting, uh, public is invited to attend the HPC members. And that's why we recited that at Mr. Boozak's, uh, request in the resolution, uh, which meetings the, uh, the historic preservation element, uh, was discussed or considered, uh, at the HPC meeting. So that, that's the only type of, uh, public, uh, hearing that took place. Once a nomination report is actually authored and this plan element is not a nomination report, then, uh, not only would any property owner be noticed, but they're noticed at every level, that considers a nomination report, but no nomination report has even been written.
Okay, well, I'm just, when people might watch this meeting, it's recorded, they should be prepared that they will have to retain an attorney to protect their rights if they're, and then if, as Mr. Bear said, if their properties are designated. And he's going to share the research, Maggie, so we can see really what this will cost for these potential properties. You know, we're here to protect our residents and our commercial properties as well, on both ends of the spectrum, historic or not. Thank you. And maybe Allison would like to talk to how those public meetings went. I think that was asked in the beginning.
Sure, um, yeah, Allison, I guess if you want to, I know you wear two hats, right? You're both a, a member of our planning board and, um, the, the chair of, uh, of HPC. So yeah, if you can shed some light onto, you know, the process and how that was, I, I think we'd benefit from that.
Right, um, certainly, um, at this meeting, I'd like to keep my planning board hat on. I am listening to all the objections and listening to what possibly we could, uh, like update some of the information given. As far as that, those particular meetings, I'd have to go back and look at the notes and how they were, this has been some time, um, ago. And certainly, as Barton alluded to in the report, that, uh, multiple people reviewed this prior to. I believe, and Barton, please, please clarify, this was also on the HPC website, for review and comment, is that correct?
Yes, I believe multiple revisions, uh, through the eighteen months preceding, uh, the final report were posted on the website.
So for some time, and confirm, and I can get exact details, but if you could confirm that it was online for, what, in the past, was it on there for six months? Was it on there for a year? What, do you, do you remember as the revisions went through?
Sure, it was on there for over a year. And there was a very practical reason for that, is that the report is, you know, fifty megs or something. So it's, um, it wasn't emailable to members of the commission. So we literally had to, to give them a link and say, you got to go download this and, and review it and be prepared to discuss it.
And that was all done before noticed, uh, for public hearing with the HPC, is that correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah, so again, I don't know all the details, but again, I would, uh, like to keep, you know, my planning board hat on. I'm trying to separate a little bit from this, but certainly we can get those details, uh, for you. But that's my memory of how long this element of the master plan, how long we've been working on it and how long it was open to the public, um, for some time, so.
Great, thank you for, and I appreciate, um, appreciate that.
I don't know if the residential and the commercials, I, I don't know how many, you could maybe help me, how many commercial property addresses are affected? But if they weren't notified in advance, how would they have known to even look? Unless they were notified, then they knew to look on the report. So how many commercial properties and residential are we talking about? Would, would have known to search out your HPC report? And I think it is difficult for you to keep to, to your hat separate, because on the report, on the first page, it says you are especially thanked. So, you know, I, it might be hard for you to keep those hats completely separate.
Yeah, Diane, and I'd like to clarify that. I think I was especially thanked because of the time, the amount of time that I put into and helping Barton research all of this. But what I'd like to make clear is that no, nothing, nothing, this report does not designate anything. This is just a list of historic properties throughout Milburn, Short Hills, that have been recognized as historic. We don't even know on some of them if we have enough information to even do a full report. So this is just an inventory for the town saying, these are the historic properties that we've identified. This master plan does not, and let me make that very clear, does, does not designate any property.
Yep.
Okay?
It's, it's just focusing on the district, so not the Greenwood Garden site? I just want to make sure I understood that clearly.
Barton, can you, can you confirm the Greenwood Garden site, please, or the information?
Yeah, so, you know, all the properties are just potentially, uh, eligible to be designated, so that they're consistent with the master plan, that's all. This doesn't, we don't, we didn't have to notice any specific property owners. Uh, it's just a general document, it's an inventory document of what we have in the township. And it's, you know, it's really for, for you, the planning board members and for the town at large to, to be able to plan, um, you know, where historic resources still exist. You know, this hasn't been updated in over thirty years. So are there still clusters that could be a historic district or not? Um, and a lot of the other things that have been raised are, you know, important points. You know, we, we tried to focus on more nonprofit Greenwood Gardens, Paper Mill Playhouse, um, and more commercial properties where, uh, it would not be a monetary loss to them, because it would be offset by there's tax credits available to commercial property owners, which are not available to residential owners. So that was really, you know, that was, that's kind of in a nutshell, um, the approach that we, we took over the past year and a half.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for clarifying, um, the, the, sort of the, the nomination or the designation versus the, you know, drawing lines on a map and what the implications of that, you know, would be. I don't want to speak over anybody. Dan, your hand still looks raised, but I don't know if that's just from before, it's okay. Okay. So, you know, in the interest of us kind of moving, um, to sort of next steps, I think, yeah, we now heard about it a couple of times. The idea of, um, a subset of our, our planning board members kind of taking this, you know, with the help of, you know, tonight's presentation. I thought it was really, you know, informative for Barton to kind of walk us through it, you know, we could read it, but I, I think hearing it, sometimes adds to it, maybe it created some, you know, new additional questions, or if you listen back again, you might have more. But taking it, sort of reviewing what we've been provided with, you know, a, a year and a half worth of research, as well as many, many years of history, um, in terms of the recommendations from the HPC. And, you know, overlaying them, I think you did take a great helpful step at, at comparing, um, some of the goals and objectives from our most recent. some of the goals and objectives from our most recent master plan reexam. I think Dan raised some points that, you know, we have subsequently taken some actions which maybe don't coincide with the same, not the, not, not the same goals, because I think all the goals may be the same, but sort of the, the means to achieve those goals. And just make sure, you know, we're not doing one thing, then doing the opposite in a, in a not helpful way for sort of downtown vitality. And so just making sure that the recommendations and match and looking at the maps and kind of digging into it. So that said, Ed, it would be appropriate to have a, or Graham, you can correct me probably as well, to have a subcommittee of two to three planning board members, is that?
Well, we, we, we can't have more than, we can't have five or more. So we can have up to four, because we're a nine-member board, so we can't have a, a quorum or majority, so.
Great. And because I would anticipate, you know, and this gets into sort of Allison having multiple hats, I would anticipate Allison participating. I guess, Allison, you certainly would probably be a participant in this because you both do have the planning board hat as well as the historical preservation. Do you feel that you would be able to participate sort of with an eye and, you know, to both? Or would you prefer to participate in this, you know, from one such vantage point? But, but that would just sort of help me understand and inform, you know, the numbers. So I just want to sort of, you know, not put you on the spot, but just understand sort of your comfort in, in participation and, and something like moving this forward.
You know, certainly I'd be willing to do so. I think it would be more the comfort of the rest of the task force. I think I could answer questions probably more quickly with the task force by being a part of it. But I absolutely think because this document is not designating anything, it's a, it's a recommendation, it's a list. I think that I could wear both hats on this.
Great. Okay, I appreciate that. Dan, you raised a number of, you know, concerns. You echoed some of the things you heard. I would like to ask, as the vice chair of planning board, if you would consider serving on this committee, or subcommittee, I should call it.
Sure. Just let me say a couple of things. I, I'm fully aware of what this, what the element does, and I recognize the fact that this, this is not a process of designation, but recommendation at this point in time. But it's a first step, and I think even, even counsel to HPC mentioned it's a first step. Again, very sensitive to, to these types of actions where I'm very pro preservation in the right way, and certainly have, has been part of many preservation actions in the town, going back to the 2008 study that was done that I funded when I was the mayor. So, so, yes, if I could be helpful, I'd be happy to participate.
Thanks, Dan. I'd also sort of ask by a raise of hands, you know, we would then have potentially two more positions. Because our TC liaison's term ends this year, I think it would be more appropriate not to have members of the TC who may be either liaisons or on. I think I would just prefer to have the planning board class. Hmm, I don't know our class numbers, four, I think, Ed. Be the, the subcommittee members. So I know Gaston, you had raised your hand and asked questions. I don't know if you would have interest in continuing this discussion and supporting the, sort of the comparative review, or if anybody else, even if you haven't spoken up, but would like to participate in such a subcommittee.
Sure, I'll do it.
Gaston, I see Deborah, Shreenie, okay. I see a number of hands raised. I think I also would love to sort of geographically make sure we're representative of our community. And I think it's important, you know, members of the planning board, you know, are representative. And I think we've been so mindful on the planning board of making sure we, we feel we can speak, you know, and are representative of our community. So I don't know, Shreenie or Deborah, if either of you do happen to live in Short Hills.
I do, and I, I live in the historic district.
Okay. Great. So I would love to then ask Gaston, Deborah, Dan, and then Allison. Allison, I understand you would sort of be wearing the both hats, but to, to comprise our subcommittee. And we would consider that, that's the, that's the maximum number we would have, right? And that's the appropriate number. Okay. What we would do today is November 2nd. We certainly do have, I think, three, two or three more. Eileen, we have, how many more planning board meetings before the, the year is out?
We have two meetings left. We only meet once in November.
Right, that's right, because of Thanksgiving. So great. So that gives us two opportunities in terms of making use of already existing meeting times. We could always, you know, with given enough notice, schedule a special meeting if, you know, if we wanted to make sure we have an opportunity for a discussion. So I would like to task you, the subcommittee, to, you know, take the opportunity to schedule amongst yourselves. And then, Ed, can you explain to me who we could make available? Would we allow or recommend that Graham be available to support that subcommittee? From any planning perspective?
Yes, any, any of the professionals can, can be of assistance to the committee.
Great. And likewise, you know, certainly, I mean, Allison, you're hearing it now from us, but I will certainly, you know, I think, Eileen, would we formally, sort of, would we notify via a letter to the HPC what our planning board recommendation is so that they can be aware and liaise? I'm happy to kind of draft that if you can be the one to pass that along sort of in a formal capacity, so that we can make sure I think, kind of going forward, if we just make sure we have that stronger connection of, you know, being able to get our, our questions you know, discussed and, and benefit from coordination. So I will send something to Eileen in terms of just, you know, memorializing or stating what we decided tonight with the names of the members. And then, Eileen, you can, if you just pass that along sort of formally to the HPC. And then if you similarly want to have your planner or somebody participate, you know, as appropriate in additional meetings and coordination, I think that would serve us all well. And then we'd ask, once you get together, if you can look at the planning board dates and sort of self-report back to us. And, Eileen, when you would be more comfortable, I think there's an early December and a later December date to come back and sort of share an update and maybe some, if not total recommendations, some early recommendations or a proposed process that you might, you know, I guess you'd need to sort of see what, I don't want to pre-conclude for anybody, but that's my request.
Madam Chair, who would basically run these meetings? I think that would be a conflict of interest for me to be both, you know, historic preservation chair and on the planning board. So would that be something that Graham would mediate? Or how, how does that, how does that work? Because the paperwork would all come to me, then I, I'd share the, you know, I mean, that doesn't-
Yeah, no, no, I understand what you're saying. Ed, were you about to offer something about having a sort of a chair of a subcommittee?
Well, I, I think I just wanted to clarify something. We keep talking about Allison sort of being, wearing two hats. And while she does wear two hats, as she pointed out, when she had a planning board meeting, she's planning board member. And she specifically is on the planning board as, under the statute, you can have a member of the HPC on the planning board. So this is all statutorily anticipated, just like we have two elected officials on the planning board. When, when the planning board is acting as it is now, as a planning board and as a subcommittee of the planning board, Allison's not wearing two hats. Allison's wearing one hat. She's wearing the planning board hat. Now, if she wants to not wear the planning board hat, and I, if she, she does not want to wear the planning board hat because she's concerned about if there's an interaction with the HPC, as chair of the HPC, she's going to be in that chair, then maybe it's better to not have her on the subcommittee, no offense, Allison. And if there's a liaison, so to speak, with the HPC, that she will participate as an HPC member. I think, I think the difficulty will, will occur if she's on the subcommittee for the planning board. And then there's a liaison, and I'll call it liaison, there's some interaction with the HPC, and now she's on the HPC chair, that creates an issue. So if there's a thought that the subcommittee is going to interact with the HPC, I would respectfully suggest, and there's nothing illegal about what we've done or improper about what we've done, but I would suggest in order to avoid that kind of situation, if we anticipate it happening, that we have someone else on the subcommittee for the planning board. And keep Allison, again, Allison, no offense to you, as chair of the, of the HPC, so that she's not in a, in a more difficult position. It's not compromised, it's not a conflict, because the statute anticipates this, you know, membership. It's, it's statutorily authorized. So that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try to put that in layman's terms, because I'm not, I'm not always sure. Is, is what you might suggest there, keeping our planning board subcommittee to three, to Dan, Deborah, and Gaston, so that they can then in turn coordinate with the HPC, which would include Allison at that stage.
That, that's correct. Or add someone in, add a fourth member who's not Allison.
But my concern there is then when they, if they meet or to discuss, then that puts that, that-
Good point.
Too many. Okay. So then let's make the subcommittee Dan, Deborah, and Gaston, for simplicity's sake. When you guys meet, I think you can discuss amongst yourselves. If you, if you feel that you need a, a sort of a speaker, great. If you feel you can, you know, coordinate together and going to write something up as a memorandum, I will leave that to you, you three. And then we'll have you then report back. So, so Alice and I respectfully will remove you from the planning board subcommittee, so that you can fulfill your role, as Ed described, when, when they reach out to HPC to have sort of coordination.
Thank you.
Okay. No, thank you for bearing through that. Okay. Do I need to-
Just because I, I did this exact process in another community, as was alluded to by Barton earlier this evening. So if I could just also make a request as part of your correspondence over to the HPC, advising them of the action that you're taking this evening to avail Mr. Ross as a participant to assist this planning board subcommittee in review of the document. Given, you know, he's the primary drafter of the document that will assist our work. You know, I, I did not write the document, so I don't want to speak on his behalf as I, you know, assist the subcommittee in their interpretation and review of the report. So I think that would, that would be a, a good request for you to make to the HPC.
Thanks, Graham.
Yeah, thank you. That was actually going to be my recommendation, too. Thank you, Graham.
Of course.
Ed, in order to form a subcommittee, do I need to do more than what I have done?
No, everything you need to do, and you're fine.
Right. So much power. Okay. The only, I, before we move off this topic and move to conclusion, are there any other comments by members of the board? Okay. Before we conclude, I wanted to bring up one thing, which is, as I open up the meetings, I always state that the reason we're on Zoom is because of the COVID-19 pandemic. As we know, we're moving to moving back into buildings and, and being proximate to one another. As such, you know, I think planning board meetings would also benefit from being able to be, you know, us together as well as members of the public to be able to come and attend. So I have spoken to Alex McDonald, I think, because of, and Eileen as well, I think because of how we've noticed and how we listed it for the year. I think we may, and given the sort of upcoming holiday season and just confirming that there won't be a surge or seeing how we go, I think we will look in the new year to make the change back to the new year being January meeting of 23. Have back in-person meetings for the planning board. So just wanted to make sure that was discussed, and I will probably bring it up again at future meetings. That said, I am happy to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. I can get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maggie. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Okay, good night, everybody.